Given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. For your information, the items listed in Section 11 of the agenda are for reading and introduction, and the council will not take final action on them tonight. If you have questions on these items, please see city staff in the back of the chambers. Thank you for participating in your city government. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Thursday, May 8th, 2025. And first, I'd like to welcome former mayor and pastor Nathan Blackwell from Cornerstone Church for the invocation.
Could we stand together? Let me pray. Heavenly Father, what a joy it is to be able to enjoy a country where we have freedom, where we have prosperity, and so many good things, especially in this beautiful city of St. Cloud. Father, I pray you would bless all of the residents who live here, who have businesses here. I pray, God, you would bless our staff as they work hard to serve them and meet the needs of all of our residents. And tonight, I pray especially for our city council that you would give them wisdom. I pray you'd give them patience. I pray you'd give them understanding hearts and spirits as they deal with the concerns of our residents here. And God, I pray for all the city staff that are working. Thank you for the beautiful job that they do, and I pray that you would bless our city manager, our city attorney, and our police department and our firefighters. Thank you, Lord, for all that they do to serve us and to keep us safe. Bless this meeting, and we'll thank you for it in Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Blackwell, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Please be seated. And, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
All right. First, I'd like to ask the city manager if she has any updates.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have several. Within the presentation section, I have some moving people around and adding some, so I'm going to just go through the list. I'd like to move the proclamation and recognition of Police Week to be first, followed by the presentation of Employee of the Month. Add a presentation by Theater in the Cloud. Add a presentation of the Golden Brush Award, and that will leave our city auditors as the last presentation. On the consent agenda, I'd like to ask to move Item C, Resolution 2025-061R, move it to be voted with public hearings two through four. I'd like to pull Item M for a separate vote, and I'd like to remove Item Q, Resolution 2025-075R, off of the agenda.
Which is the last one off the agenda?
Q.
Q, thank you.
And then, in the public hearings, I'd like to ask the council to continue public hearings 14, 15, and 16 to the June 12th City Council meeting. That's all.
All right, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, Items 14, 15, and 16 will have to be read into the record and then continue.
In order to make a motion to move it to the June?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to read them into the record and then continue them.
Do we want to do that now?
It's your call.
The first? All right. Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and please read Item 14 into the record, 14, 15, and 16?
Yeah, it's okay to read all three and then take one motion on all three.
Yes, sir.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-24. In accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus minus 2.5 acres identified as Anthem at Ralph Miller Road, located east of South Narkusi Road and north of Ralph Miller Road, in south of Ditzin Drive, and west of Hackney Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-25. In accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of public institutional to approximately plus minus 2.5 acres identified as Anthem at Ralph Miller Road, located east of South Narkusi Road and north of Ralph Miller Road, and south of Ditzin Drive and west of Hackney Road, providing for amending of official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, availability, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-26. In accordance with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of plus minus 2.5 acres identified as Anthem at Ralph Miller Road, from LDR Low Density Residential County or Open Spaces and Recreational Zoning Designation with a public institutional future land use designation, generally located east of South Narkusi Road, north of Ralph Miller Road, south of Ditzin Drive, and west of Hackney Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, survivability, and effective date.
All right, thank you. Can we get a motion on those three items, please? Motion to move it to the June?
12.
12th meeting.
Motion to continue to the June 12th meeting.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mayor, if I could point out to all the people standing, although a lot of people don't like to sit in the front row, there's a lot of seats still in the front row.
All right, council. Now, I'd like to go ahead and ask council for a motion to approve all of the proclamations and the presentations that are on this agenda here.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. And first up, we have the proclamation recognition of National Police Week by Councilmember Fletcher to Chief Kirk.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the St. Cloud Police Department, whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2025. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through 17th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Sean Fletcher, Deputy Mayor, along with the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. Thank you.
Sure, sure, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I cannot thank you enough. It is an honor and privilege to serve you each and every day, but I deserve none of the credit. I will tell you, there is our police officers in the back. Most of them are, unfortunately, they're still on the road. They're actually protecting us as we speak here, but love to have you guys come up here so we can take a photo. They're the ones who deserve all the credit. As you know, we're a very fast-growing city. I promise you, we are, we pick the very best and the very bright to wear our uniform to actually go out and serve our community every day. We do a lot of community engagement units, a lot of community engagement events out there every day, but it's a true honor to serve you. These officers, sometimes they say goodbye to their families. They don't know if they're going to be able to come back home, and that really weighs heavily on me, and I hope it weighs heavily on all of you. So, thank you very much for your support, always your steadfast support of our police officers. Thank you. I got one more. Yeah, we do have an amazing police force and a great chief and deputy chief here with us. Next up, we have the presentation of Employee of the Month by Miriam Abassler.
Good evening. When we held the historic swearing-in ceremony following the November 2024 election, installing Councilmember Jennifer Paul, the first African-American council member in the city's 113-year history, it led to council passing a resolution denouncing the city's past reputation as a sundown town and affirming St. Cloud's acceptance of all people. As I watched community reaction on social media, I noted that there were people who were very supportive, but there was also people who just couldn't believe it. They were like, "We've been here our whole lives. We never heard about this. Therefore, it never happened." I spoke with my team, and we knew that there was a story here that needed to be told. I turned to Deborah Carson to tell that story. Deborah originally joined the city part-time as a video storyteller for us. She has a unique gift for making people feel comfortable, even on camera, which is quite a task, and she connects with them in the kind of meaningful way that's essential to good storytelling. When a full-time position became available as a media services engineer, Deborah jumped at the opportunity, but we both agreed we still needed her talent as a video storyteller for special occasions, and this certainly qualified. We freed most of her time up for the month of January, although she still was up in the production booth at the back of the room, providing great camera work for city meetings. But we set her loose to find residents who lived in St. Cloud during that era, during those sundown town years. I know she worked with Councilmember Paul and found people to talk to, and honestly, the more people she talked to, the more stories she had. She came and talked both to myself and to Andrew in our department several times because she was just getting so much good stuff, and every story led to another story. And it kind of became, how do you fill 20 pounds of potatoes into a five-pound bag? So, we would just kind of talk and brainstorm, and I really just kind of encouraged her to follow her heart and follow her passion and tell the stories that really resounded with her, because I said, "That's going to come through on these videos." And I think she did a really great job in doing that. Ultimately, the final product was a video series titled Beyond Sundown that she and the city can be very proud of. The series highlighted not only some of the people and experiences from that era, but also some of the historic buildings and locations. The series also celebrates the fact that St. Cloud has moved beyond that and look forward to a bright future with a beautiful tapestry of people who now call St. Cloud home. We released the series one week at a time throughout the month of February as part of our Black History Month celebration. We have submitted the series for several awards, and I'm confident her efforts will be recognized at the state and national level through those awards programs. But for now, here tonight, we are proud to recognize Deborah Carson as Employee of the Month for her outstanding work on the Beyond Sundown video series.
Deborah would win Employee of the Day every single day in my book, because every time I'm up here, she gets me Airhead candies when I walk down the hallway. She'll run to her office, and she knows the flavors I like, so, except for that white one. She never knows what that one is, so. All right. Yes, thank you, Deborah. Next up, we do have a presentation by Theater in the Cloud.
Good evening, council. My name is Joshua Steen Camp. I am the artistic director for Theater in the Cloud. We are the very first community theater in the history of St. Cloud, Florida. Up here with me is Jason, Jason Weddington. He's our marketing director. Mark Williams is our theater director. There are two members that are not here with us today. That is Alex Daly, which is our community outreach director, and Megan Hook, who is our volunteer coordinator. I believe we have a presentation, slideshows.
There should be a clicker on the.
Is there a clicker on there?
Yes.
Oh, where? To this button?
I don't see a clicker.
Oh, there it is. There it is. Okay, I found it. Somebody hit that. Our mission statement when we first began, we began in 2020 when we founded the theater, is our mission is to expand the creative culture within St. Cloud, Florida by establishing an environment dedicated to live artistic expression for all mediums. We strive to unify, enrich, and inspire our community through the arts. Today, we still believe this. We are dedicated to doing this, and in the future, I know that we're going to accomplish more. We'd like to talk about the list of shows to do this. I'd like to bring up our theater director, Mark Williams.
Hey, guys. As mentioned, my name is Mark Williams. I'm the theater director here at Theater in the Cloud, and we are really dedicated to providing quality theater experiences for our community. Some of the shows we have done, such as No Exit by Jean-Paul Sartre, Waiting for Godot by Samuel Beckett, and we're also doing Driving Miss Daisy this summer. These are three Pulitzer Prize-winning shows that we will be performing and have performed. So, we have, let's see, click. Click. There we go. So, we've done altogether 11 theater shows, and we've done three magic shows taking place in downtown businesses in the St. Cloud area. We also have had over 7,000 volunteer hours. We started out the VFW, and they were really kind to us, but we started growing after that. And so, after we moved out of VFW, we moved into the Women's Center right down the road as we partnered with Parks and Rec with the Women's Club. We also have performed shows at the Community Center as well. We've also enhanced the space that we're in. In every space that we're in, we're trying to, you know, use a little bit of our own funding to enhance that space, making it a little more rentable for other productions, other shows in the future. And we bring a lot of new people to that building. Each one of our shows brings in at least 100 people per production. And since our production, five years in production, don't realize St. Cloud has a community theater. Theater and a vibrant arts program is a pillar of a thriving community. As a nonprofit, we rely on ticket sales, donations, and volunteers, struggles to maintain budget that cover operational costs, including royalties, sets, costumes, et cetera.
So, those are the problems that we have had. The solutions to these problems are that we have partnered with Parks and Rec, and we have hosted citywide events. Since we were created and partnering with Aaron Jinks at Parks and Rec, you have probably seen us on the New Year's Eve stages. You've seen us at St. Patrick's Day, to the July 4th Festival, and we've also helped out with the acting and directing of The Trail of Terror. What we really need is support from the city. One of the biggest problems we have is we do the monthly markets, and a lot of people go, "We have a theater in town." They didn't know. Constantly, we're asked, "We have a theater in town." We didn't know. The market has been helping us a lot. One of the big things is advertising in the city, using citywide social media. If there's any way that we're able to partner with that, to share what we're doing in our town. Grant assistance, which we actually did sign up for, the citywide grants program, which Jason will be taking. I wanted to add this of acting theaters by county. In Osceola County, there is one. That is Osceola Arts. They have one building. They've been around for 60 years. We love them. They've been around forever. Theater in the Cloud and Arts Unlimited. Every other big stage are schools, or they're owned by the county. So, the Austin County School for the Arts, that stage is owned by the county, and all the other ones are basically high schools. In Orange County, some of them break through theater, Winter Park Playhouse, Renaissance Theater Company, Orlando Family Stage, Orlando Shake, CF Arts. There are many, many more. There's about 35 standalone acting theaters. These are small companies. This is what we'd like to do in our city, and with the help of the city and the people, summer camps, theater classes, and workshops, tapping into local and state arts funding. Our biggest goal that we would like to do is we want to have our own permanent building so that St. Cloud can say that it has its own community municipal theater. That's why we're giving this presentation today, is to, a call for help from all of you. I know we've sat down with many of the council members. I know, Ms. Paul, we have yet to have a chance to sit down and speak, which we'll do that. Some of the reviews, we've had actors ranging from 15 years old, 13 years old, all the way to 82. We are a community theater. You have to have no acting experience to be in a show, and that is our presentation. Do you have any questions for us?
Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, thank you very much. Our arts, we had, in the bridge, we had another art display just before this meeting, and I truly believe arts is such an expression and so needed in today's society. I think it gets lost sometimes, but I would just love to partner with you. We had talked earlier about acting classes, getting the youth involved, the ground-up stuff, because if there's acting or ballet or dance, right, it's just really not here.
That is one of the issues. We love being at the Women's Club. We love the building, has a small stage. We also share that building, you know, because it is a city-owned building. We do share that with the Women's Club, the Rotary, and the museum. So, we do three shows a year. For us to add more programming, the scheduling gets very tight. That's why we really are trying to find a new building, our own space, that we can run a schedule of.
I know that the City Council would love to have space available, and you're not the only folks, but I believe in you. I believe in what you're doing, and I'd like, as a personal, not just a councilperson, to assist you there. So, please let me know how, and thank you for you doing. It's so important for this culture to be in our city as we continue to grow. I yield back to you, Mayor.
And Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I just want to say thank you for the update, and thank you for the overview of what you provide here in the City of St. Cloud. I know that your partnership has run along with the city. You are the host and the face of a lot of the city events, and as a city, you know, it leads me personally, and I know the council. We thank you for that and look forward to any future opportunities that lie ahead in the future. So, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, thank you all for being here tonight. I've gotten to know you throughout many events in the city, and you guys do a great job in our community. As Councilman Gilbert said, we just met with the St. Cloud High School Arts Program that we're going to hear from soon, and arts is so important in our city and in our community. So, whatever we can do to support you and partner with you, I'm all for.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul.
And I want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all that you do in the St. Cloud community, and look forward to speaking with you as well. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for the presentation. But, no, you know, we've sat down and we've spoken, and you guys know I have a stage, and we'll kind of, we'll talk about that here in the future here. But one thing, you know, this council, we're going to move forward on doing some things in Veterans Park here. So, you know, there's a band show, and hopefully on Sunday mornings, we can do some things and include you guys. I think one of y'all are on that.
I'm on the, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to be meeting on that soon, probably in the next month.
Perfect.
And start strategizing, coming up some ideas on that, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have the presentation of the Golden Brush Award. Well, Mayor, if you give me just a couple of seconds, I would like to actually respond to the gentleman that just spoke. I know, my name is Nate Fancher. I've been the principal at St. Cloud High School. I'm going to my 15th year next year, and we are, St. Cloud High School has really become almost secondary to the school for the arts. I can touch base with them later if they disappeared. You're looking around, but if somebody could give me their information, we at St. Cloud High School, in my 15 years there, have expanded the arts to become a magnet almost parallel to the Osceola County School for the Arts. We offer ballet, visual arts, band, orchestra, chorus, musical theater, dance, ballet, acting, drama, musical theater, I probably said that already, and we have technical theater. So, we have an 800-person auditorium that is, out of 365 days of the year, is empty most of those days, and I would love to be able to partner with a troupe like that that could also work with our students and teach them exactly what it takes to run a production from the front of the house to the back of the house, and how to market a show, how to build the set. So, I think that is something that they would also find valuable if they were to have shows at our school. They could, it could be a very profitable fundraiser for them as well. So, I don't know if I'm supposed to be saying this right now, but I often do things that I'm not supposed to, but.
Doing some partnerships with the city and the school, and, you know, that's not the first time. Years ago, you know, when our community was so much smaller.
Right.
You know, with Puffin Ball, they had the fire at the Puffin Ball Mechanics.
Yeah.
They, the Puffin Ball actually operated out of St. Cloud High and taught the kids the auto.
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, it's. Being a public school administrator, the school is, it's for the public. So, you know, we have huge facilities, and, you know, I would love to partner with anybody that would like to be able to use those, and it is a benefit to both parties. So, I'm going to put that out there.
Deputy Mayor, would you like to get the principal in touch with Theater in the Cloud?
But again, thank you for having me here tonight. Good evening, Mayor Robertson, and esteemed members of the council. It's my honor to recognize the incredibly talented students from St. Cloud High School who are receiving the prestigious Golden Brush Award tonight. We're close to 10 years on this award, so, again, I really appreciate that. If we could give them a round of applause, everybody. We can go and ask the kids to come on up, or are we going to talk some more? They are, so give me two seconds. These young artists don't just create beautiful work, they tell stories. The art provokes thought, and it reflects the soul of our community through every brush stroke. Art has the power to connect, to heal, to ignite change, and our students are doing just that. Art has the power to connect, to heal, to ignite change, and our students are doing just that. They are not only the future of the arts, they are already making their mark today. And as we celebrate their creativity and dedication, we are reminded that when we invest in the arts, we invest in imagination, innovation and identity. On behalf of St. Cloud High School, thank you for shining a light on their brilliance. I'd like to introduce Ms. Dagum to introduce and award our seniors. So I'm going to pass the baton to her. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the council to go down below here and we're going to have the, the kids come up if everybody wants to help put the chords on the students.
We would like to call all the seniors first.
Yes. Yeah, you want to give the, this one first.
All the seniors, please come forward. Uh, Mr. Fancher. So, uh, the, the chord that they're going to receive is the chord of the fine arts. So they only get this if they fulfill the portfolio component.
And they get to wear it during graduation?
They, yes, they get to wear this during their graduation. So, um, we're gonna give it to you guys.
And I think each student is going to sing a song tonight as well.
We got in a meeting with the students earlier and they talked, they shared the stories about their art and they got into the hobby of art or the art of it. Really left a lasting impression, so thank you.
Don't mind giving it to them.
How do we present? They don't wear it on their ears.
Uh, can I take your picture?
Maybe for the picturing, are there names in it too?
Okay, right here, please. I got everybody's faces. Um, Deputy Mayor, can you step a little bit to your right? There you go. Perfect. Got it. Thank you.
Here we go. One, two.
Thank you.
Just stay there, guys. The next part, we would like to call in the rest of the kids who are underclassmen to join the seniors. So, uh, guys, they're going to pin it on you. The, uh, yes, uh, you just pin it on the, yeah.
So if you could wear it, please, and then we're going to have the picture.
Everybody got? Here you go, sir.
Thank you.
And then, uh, if you don't mind, uh, the ones who are wearing pants, please kneel. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you, Principal.
And now the boring part. All right. We'll wait till the room clear out a little bit more. All right, next up we have a presentation from Purvis Grain Company, the independent auditors. And I request, uh, approval of council action, item one. Is that, uh, that's item one is the?
Yes, so as soon as he's done with the presentation, if we could just motion.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was glad, I was, I was happy to see a, a packed crowd to listen to the audit presentation. I think, I think they all cleared out though now, so that makes a lot more sense. Um, so, so I'm here to give the audit results for the year ending September 30th, 2024, for the city's financial audit. My name is Matthew Gunno. I'm an audit director that oversees the audit engagements with the city. Um, joined today by Tim Westgate, audit partner with the firm as well, who works on the, oversees the engagement. So this is just a screenshot of the leadership team of the audit team, for the audit team. Um, just to point out that the city does participate in the GFOA Certificate of Achievement and Excellence in Financial Reporting. This requires the city to go above and beyond the standard requirements, um, in the name of transparency and more timely financial reporting. This requires the city to submit additional schedules with their financial, with their AFR, our annual financial report, um, as well. They did receive the award for the year ending September 30th, 2023, and we expect this year's financial statements also to receive that, uh, prestigious award. So as part of our audit engagement, we issue several audit reports. The primary one, the main one that everybody's going to look for is the independent auditors report. In this report, it discusses management's responsibility as the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements of the city. Our responsibility as auditors is to perform audit procedures and issue an opinion on those financial statements that they are fairly presented in all material respects. Happy to say, based off our audit procedure, procedures, the city, we did, uh, have a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, highest level of assurance that we can offer as part of this engagement, that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Uh, we also issue a report over internal controls of our financial reporting and compliance, uh, as required by government auditing standards. Um, if there was anything in that report to bring to your attention, um, it would be, it would be found in that. There's no, no material weaknesses. Um, there was one issue related to compliance, which is long outstanding related to the Stevens plantation. Um, that's been ongoing for several years. I know management and, uh, is working on that to get that addressed and hopefully that can be gone in the near future. We also issue a compliance report on 218 Florida statute, 218, 415, with the city's investment compliance. Again, nothing to bring to your attention that the city did, um, comply in all material respects related to that requirement for the investment policy. Since the city expends more than $750,000 in federal awards, they are required to have a special single audit, which is a compliance audit over those federal expenditures, uh, to ensure that they were properly expended, no findings or questioned costs. I'm happy to report that we did not have any findings that are in that report as well. We also issue a report, um, to the council members, um, and to management, and it has a lot of boilerplate language in there. It talks about what the estimates that management used for the preparation of their financial statements. It also discussed any possible audit adjustments that were found or any past adjustments, as well as if we had any disagreements with management or any other difficulties that we feel that we would need to bring to your attention. Happy to report everything went well, uh, no disagreements with management. There was a slight delay. The city does try to issue their annual financial report by March 31st. Um, this year, some of the actual reports came in in late February, early March, as well as some time to get the GFOA Certificate of Achievement, um, findings or results or any recommendations they have. Um, due to that, um, it was extended one month and it was issued in April instead. This is just the, the recommendation that I previously mentioned earlier, and this is ongoing from several years. I, the, I know the city is working on this to get this resolved and hopefully that, again, that can be resolved in the near future. So that can be removed. Um, and this last slide I think I have is just talking about some of the upcoming future accounting pronouncements. We discussed this with management during the end of, um, last year's audit and we'll do so again when we come back out to the city to start the new audit. Uh, but management's aware of these and we'll discuss it further so they can review them and implement them as needed. Um, that's all I have for the audit presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody asks me.
Uh, councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much and it's been a pleasure. Uh, you guys do a great job. Uh, we're looking at something in 2013 and I know that may or may not be how you help us get rid of it. But any blip on our radar screen, uh, may or may not hurt us in, in our credit values as we go for bonds and, and things such as that. Do you have any suggestions of how this, uh, uh, 12, a little over 12 year old blip gets, uh, taken care of?
Yeah, I mean, the main thing that's really looking for that is just some, something really to assure that there is no contingent liability, that the city has any liability or anything else that may be related to this. The city did sell all of the property related to this. Um, just trying to get some sort, sort of assurance that there is no pending liability that the city may have to repay related to this engagement. Um, typically that would be in the form of either some sort of release from any type of liability or, um, obtaining from a, a, an attorney letter opining on it as well. So I know management's discussed, because I know this is ongoing and everybody wants it to kind of be removed. So I think it's there, just that that last step, just needs something to ensure that there's no liability that Stevens plantation may have.
And we know that in seven years, usually things go off, but this is, uh, 12, 13 years old. So thank you very much.
City Attorney.
Yeah, just, just a little update on that, because we are working with the bondholders attorneys and the trustees attorneys with regard to this. And, and as Matt pointed out, there is no liability to the city, uh, with that, but we, the, the provisions related to those bonds, repayment source was the real property. Once all the property were sold, there's no liability to this, to the city or to the DSD actually for the bonds. Uh, the, the delay has been getting the bondholders to sign off on the release that Matt, we, uh, we did. We did find out about two weeks ago that one of the, the several bondholders have signed off on it. And hopefully we're moving in the direction to get it done pretty quickly.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. And, uh, I believe we do have one received in this report. Uh, any other questions from us? And Madam Clerk, can you please read council action item number one into the record?
Request city council's acceptance of the city's annual, annual comprehensive financial report, ACFR, for fiscal year 2324 as presented by Purvis Grain Company LLC, independent auditors.
Motion approved. We have a motion from councilmember Gilbert, second from, uh, Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you. And the next portion, thank you guys. I appreciate that report, report on that. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Counsel, do you have any items that you'd like to pull? Deputy, I'm sorry, councilmember Urban.
Was, um, item M is already pulled for a separate vote.
Yes.
Okay. Just like to, uh, pull that for discussion as well.
All right, and councilmember Gilbert.
Uh, may I pull A, please? And then D, please.
And councilmember Paul. All right, and let's go ahead and, uh, who's up first on that one? We have, uh, councilmember Urban. Item, well, let's just go right down the, the, you want to start with A? Is that how we would typically do it? There's a bunch of them in here. And who wanted A? Councilmember Gilbert.
Yeah. Uh, looking at the rate schedule, uh, and it's resolution number, uh, 2025030R. What we are trying to accomplish, um, in, in, in our rate, um, adjustments, uh, was that the city of St. Cloud taxpayers pay a certain amount of money to have some of these, what I, I don't want to call them lost leaders, but to operate a park or a swimming pool or a basketball court, it always is less. It's, it's more expensive than what we charge, but we try to recoup some of our stuff. So I think what we've done and, 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 uh, city manager can attest to this, we've looked at and asked them to raise the rates for non-citizens in St. Cloud because they don't play the, the citizen, uh, the city state, the city tax. Therefore there's, uh, additional volumes due. Again, I don't believe that these rates cover our cost. I do help them cushion the cost of what, what they are, but not, not cover the cost. Uh, so I, I know we'd started this a few years ago. I'd like all the citizens to be able to look at this and, and this is what we're trying to do is just cover a portion of our costs, not the full cost, not to cover, but to cushion some of the, the expenses. Uh, as we look at these, the, the pool passes and things such as that, if anybody has a pool at home, they know how much it costs to operate. But if you look at a city, the costs are exorbitant for that. So I just want the, uh, citizens to know that this has been working down for two years now, that we, we think we've came up with some viable cost. Again, not to cover them, but just to cushion the cost. With that, I yield back to, uh, councilmember Paul for any comments that she may have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So if I could, um, if I can get, um, our deputy manager, Scott, to come up and publicly indicate the cost of the repairs for each location.
I think you mean of the boat ramps? Yes.
For the, for the boat ramps?
Yes.
And forgive me, because.
Excuse me. Scott Davidoff, deputy city manager. Councilmember Paul's question regarding our boat ramps and our marine facilities. Uh, the marina repair, which has been discussed by this council, or excuse me, in previous councils, uh, there are some needed repairs that need to be done at the marina. Staff is in the process right now of obtaining those quotes and that project is estimated right now from the first quote to be somewhere between 785,000 to 1.1 million. Uh, in 2019, the lakefront was dredged at a cost of $247,000. And we are currently right now under construction to redo and enhance the boat ramp over at Chisholm Park. And that total will be $455,477.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
And just, just, just to, um, add to that, um, I believe, um, to, to councilmember Gilbert's point, um, I believe in the last year since I've sat on council, I believe we've done, uh, repairs to the restroom facilities at the pool. We've, we've made upgrades there, um, as, as well. So just wanted to put that out there, because I know I didn't ask for it.
But you are correct. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is that all?
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Urban, you want to speak on D?
Is that? Gilbert, I believe.
That was D. No, that was A. You asked for D.
Yeah, I did ask for for D. Again, when we're talking about, I'm sorry, to to bring everyone up to snuff. We're talking about rental pavilions and rental facilities that the city has. In the upkeep of such facilities and rentals from our pavilions at Lakefront to our our. Meeting rooms and in meeting playing rooms. My background is in the meeting playing business. My company does over three hundred eighty meetings a year. And I noticed that our cost over twenty seven years has increased. Considerably, but I I noticed when I had came to work here that our rental rates have not increased at all. For for some of our facilities and some of them go back for seven years. And the reason I say that is because. I look at the whole tax base payers as all of our citizens, which is sixty eight thousand citizens, but I would think there's more than that through our census. But not all those people use these facilities. So I don't know why it's determined that they take money out of their hard earned money. To pay for these events that people come from outside of the city of St. Cloud to hold a bar mitzvah, to hold a wedding, to have a birthday party and things like that. So. We delve deep into it and say, what are our actual costs? I don't believe that these. I I know, and and prove me wrong, that these facilities that we offer. Make the city money. Again, I just want to cushion that versus costing us. So what we did is we looked at the cost of doing business and the cost of rental facilities in other counties, Seminole County, Orange County. Volusia County and then Osceola County, and our rates are trying to get. Near those rates. Again, it doesn't cover the cost, but it cushions the cost. So we have very many great facilities that weddings are held at. That that there's certain venues. If you look at Lakefront, our pavilions, a great place to have a birthday party or anything else. But we are just looking at trying to keep up some of those costs and costs associated because wages have gone up, materials have gone up. Just rental space in itself has gone up per square footage and these these new schedules, Schedule D. Will not recover fully, but recover some of our cushionability, not not not. It's still not comfortable with me, but I think we're going in the right direction. So these are in other areas we've been looking at for two and so years and they just need to be done. And I'd encourage any citizen here or that's online. To look at the that our venues and there's still a great cost and a great savings, plus great venues. Canary Park is a great venue. Above, Crabby Bill's is a great venue. All those pavilions are a great venue. But what goes into those venues is the cost of maintaining, the cost of maintenance and the cost of having those facility and keeping the lights on. So those are why we've adjusted these schedules, I believe, and I yield back to you, Mayor and Council for any of your input.
Yes, sir. All right, and I would like to chime in in eleventh hour here. I'd like to pull item J and K as well. I want to speak about the the public safety complex. Do we have somebody from ADG here and Skanska? Yes, sir. Yeah. I wanted to put a face to the name and.
Yes, sir.
How you know. Name and.
Ian Reeves, Architects Design Group President.
Yes, sir. And Skanska?
Yes, I'm Bob Cloyde, Regional Director with Skanska.
Okay, so you're owner's rep on the project and you're the architect and doing the civil engineering on the entire site?
Yes, sir.
And so we're going to be moving forward on phase one, right, which is the comm center. And if we can get the police chief up here as well. I know he knows more about this project than anybody in our. Throughout the years, I know.
Good afternoon, Eric. Good evening, everyone. Doug Gurkey, Chief of Police. Yes, sir. That is phase one that we're working on right now. That's before you today on the consent agenda.
Okay, that that's the emergency management center as well or emergency operations.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it's going to be some of the site development around the area, but it's going to be the Emergency Operations Center and Communications Center, state of the art facility. That should be carrying us for the next thirty years plus. So very, very excited about to be moving forward for it.
All right. So so when you you guys write out the hurricanes, you've been in that little building on Tenth Street here and it's just. It's it's outlived its shelf life. It's done.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's very interesting. But yes, sir.
Okay.
That'll help us definitely.
And I'll tell you, I'm so excited this project's moving forward. This has been on the books for. Ten years at least.
Longer.
Yeah. You know, this city was purchased. It's been paid off for many years. It's been at risk a few times for townhome developments in the past, and thankfully that never happened because here we are today. We're moving forward and. And public safety is number one in our community. So I want to thank you guys and. And I will look forward to the next couple of years, I guess, get this this project completed, all of the phases.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that. And obviously, you know, we're at capacity and I'll tell you, as a growing city, a vibrant city, we want to make sure we have the correct. Infrastructure in place to ensure that we continue to stay the safest city in the state of Florida and obviously. Continue to provide top notch services is basically what you expect us to do and we're excited. So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your support.
Appreciate you. All right, well, can we go ahead and get a motion to. Approve the consent agenda minus the items that we took off. Councilmember Urban.
I was going to discuss item M.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead. Yeah, that was going to be voted with.
Yes, so there were.
We've pulled that first separate vote.
Right.
So so everything minus M.
Well, we also moved C to here later on and then Q was removed, so so.
Correct. So everything but C, M.
And Q.
And Q.
Right.
All right, can we get a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Motion to approve that.
Motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul. Aye. Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, and now we are going to vote separately on item M.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, sir.
You need to announce your conflict.
I have to recuse myself.
Yeah, thank you. And you'll complete the conflict form after.
I already have. Thank you.
All right.
City Attorney, I've done that prior to the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Very cool. All right, and can we get a motion to approve item M?
Well, I think Mr.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring up the fact that I met with the the applicant on this project and. Because they are. Reviving what I believe is an economic development opportunity for our city and investing a lot in our community. I wanted to see what the council would entertain. Possibly adding in an exclusivity clause for this particular vendor and also. A boat slips for their service boat to be able to get the boat in and out, at least for the first five years, just to help them get them off the ground and keep them operating.
Yeah.
In our city.
Terry, would you like to come up and speak to us about this, please? We all met with Terry and she shared her great vision for this boat and we're very excited.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, Veronica. My name is Terry Torrens and we're excited to be here. The company that we have formed to take over the riverboat at the front is called Vintage Voyages. And we hope to revive the boat and take it in a little bit different direction. Hopefully, we're going to. Yeah, maybe entertain some folks with some history. Of how the lakes and lands are altered over time by people like Hamilton Distin and Henry Flagler. And. So the new business will be called the Old Florida River Boat Company and we hope to actually get with theater in the cloud. So they're pretty popular tonight because we were hoping to do some. Some stuff with them. But really what I wanted to ask you guys about and specifically thank you, Councilmember Urban, for bringing it up, is it's a pretty significant investment to get that boat. Not only. Out from under the previous owner, but it's significant renovations right now, a lot that we're doing and will continue to do over time. It's an expensive venture, and so I was hoping that you guys would entertain the concept of giving us an exclusivity clause just because. It would help to continue to ensure that it drove the business to that particular venue versus maybe some alternatives that could come in for a lot less money that would really. Kind of challenge our ability to stay in business. And so that's kind of really what we're looking for. The other thing was a city dock. There's a work boat that we use to clean and push the boat around. It's nothing fancy. It can actually. Be tied even not in a slip if anywhere is good with us, but it's easier to have it at the dock if it's possible. Because it makes it easier to get in and out rather than keeping it on the trailer. So that's what I was hoping for, and so that was what my request was.
All right, City Attorney.
Any questions?
So with regard to the exclusive, I guess we would need a little bit more detail about what we're, what you're asking for before the. Before the council decides it gives us direction on how to revise the current agreement because that's not in the current agreement. The other thing is there is, I want to make sure that before you, there is a provision in the agreement that has a blank in it that we needed to work out and we and Mrs. Miller and Ms. Torrens worked it out earlier. But on when you when you consider, on page five, there's a provision in there that requires the operator to. To be up and operating within a certain period of time. So we we'd like to add and we've agreed to add ninety days. So once the agreement is approved, they'd have ninety days. From which to start operating. But so we can talk about the exclusivity clause a little bit more as long as we, as soon as we get a better understanding of what we're looking for. What they're asking for.
Okay, so we're gonna, do we would need to hold off on a vote on this until we understand that better?
I think so, yeah. If you want to give us some direction on how, well, we can talk about it right now. I just don't know what you want to do. So with some direction from the council.
Um, I think I.
I thought you were waiting for Terry.
Yeah.
Give more information now or from us?
I think we, I'd like to hear more information about what she's asked from, I don't know if the council knows.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So thank you, Terry. First of all, I know this is a big undertaking and and as have, as as we've dealt with this issue over time. I I really appreciate the the steadfast commitment of the folks have worked so hard. To get this back up and running. We did have the opportunity to meet. I am familiar with 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 the request for the exclusivity. I am in in favor of it as well, as well as adding the the additional boat slip for you guys. I look at this as an economic development project, a way to showcase the city. And that's always been the way that I've looked at it from from the beginning. I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of of continuing it. I think we could kind of make that decision tonight.
Yeah, if if I could, I'm sorry if I didn't explain it correctly, so.
It's language.
Well, it's a, say, to just say you want an exclusivity clause is a pretty wide open phrase, right? So. Right now, you're, right now, the agreement provides that there's a franchise area that's being granted, right? So. Did this this vendor. The the entity you're dealing with will be the only entity that's allowed to use that franchise franchise area. So. With regard to the franchise area, that is an exclusive. That is an exclusive right. But it sounds like we're looking for something more than just a franchise area, and I just don't know what that is. I'm not sure what that is.
Do you want me to describe like when we had our conversations? Does that, did that help?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, did you have something else to add to that?
Um, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, I don't have anything to say.
I'm sorry, the light was on.
Yes, Terry, go ahead.
Okay, so one of the things that came to our mind is if there was something similar that operated like a pontoon boat that was there prior to the riverboat. They'd be able to operate for a lot less overhead and would be able to sell their product a lot less expensive than we would with the larger. Facility and overhead and all that sort of stuff. So what we were looking for was exclusivity to not have a similar. Tour type boat operate in the basin. Does that make sense? Anybody?
That's how I understood all of that.
City Attorney.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean, that does, that makes sense. I was just trying to find out what we're talking about.
Yeah.
So if that's something the council wants, we certainly can write that up, recognizing, of course. The city has limited. Ability to restrict certain operators who who are not. Using a, like, for example, if someone launches at the, from or pulls up at the boat dock. They don't have a slip there. They're not using anything to board from the city property and they're running some sort of tour operation. We're going to be tough for the city to stop that. Right? We certainly can, if you have, certainly the city could agree not to rent to another pontoon boat facility. Not to put out, not to grant any other rights for anybody else to operate towards out of the city's facilities. And we certainly can agree to do that.
Yeah, I think that's, and I don't mind the the exclusive on the on the boat. Obviously, that's a, you put a lot of money into that. I I just fear. Putting that extra burden on the city. If somebody brings a quality boat, it's not like if they bring a, obviously, a ragtag boat, you don't want. That kind of a competition. But if somebody brings a quality boat, I think it's different than the riverboat experience. I don't know. What are y'all's thoughts? That's that's kind of a, that's where it's. If I, how do we tie up something else and?
We just need direction from the council, I think. Ms. Torrance just told you what she's asking for.
Yeah, I'm okay with the five years on the riverboat or the paddle boat. I guess that's.
You're talking about the five years on the slip.
A five, no, well, five year. Exclusive on. The paddle boat. Where we're not going to enter into another franchise agreement with another paddle boat operator. Isn't that? That's number one. Then there's the slip, right?
Right.
That's, you need a tug boat or a pull boat.
Yeah.
What is that? Eight hundred dollars a year is our typical fees on that?
That's correct.
What we, is there any way that we can get some kind of sponsorship from providing that?
Sure.
Whatever y'all.
You get sponsorship on everything I do. You're kind of the boss.
All right.
So on the on the boat slip, is it the consensus of the council, I think Mr. Urban had suggested for five years, the first term?
I would say, well, at least for the first five years and and we could revisit it after that.
Okay.
Yeah, but can we at least give them the right of first refusal on any other franchise agreements with any other kind of?
If I could, Mayor, I was just trying to stick with the boat slip piece for first, right? So just even got a consensus on that. So the consensus of the of the council is. Be okay for allow her to allow them to have access to one boat slip for their. Push boat, whatever you call it. For a period for the, basically for five years. The the term provides for an initial term of five years, so you would end up renegotiating it after the first five years anyway. So it could be dealt with at that point. So is there a consensus on that? Okay. All right, so we got that part. All right, so now back to the exclusive piece.
All right.
And so, Mayor, what were you suggesting on that?
I agree with the five year on the boat, the big boat. The paddle, any paddle paddle boat franchise agreement. Maybe with any other type of a watercraft franchise agreement, we give a right of first refusal. For the first five years. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Is that fair for you? I mean, that's what I'm asking you if that it's. If that's something that's acceptable on your side.
You would like another boat there inside the first five years to operate and you want to do that or?
Well, we don't know what tomorrow brings. So you know, that's that's the, but I'm saying I'm willing to. Put that in the language and support that language where you get a right of first refusal. If somebody comes to the table and says, hey. You know, we've got this type of an operation, then we'd say, hey, could you? Would you be interested in doing it?
Yeah, I. I.
Is that, is that, does that make sense, Dan? Is that something we could do?
So are you referring to? A tour boat operator. Different than the what what Ms. Torrance is proposing with regards to the larger riverboat? So she mentioned a. Basically, a pontoon boat running tours out of there. So what you're suggesting is that if if an operator like that. Comes to the city and says, I want to operate, we'd give them the first right of refusal to do that.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, you're okay with paddle boat exclusivity piece.
I'm okay with the paddle boat.
Practically, no one else is going to.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that, right? Pretty much agree with that.
You're sure on the paddle boat. I think it would be tough to be able to to support both of those. Like a pontoon boat and a paddle boat. That was why I was asking for the exclusivity versus a first right refusal.
Again, we just need direction.
Councilmember Paul.
So I think Ms. Torrance was referring to, because, you know, she's invested so much money into this project. Then someone decides to come in and want to do the same thing. They could bring another big river boat, but I don't think we need multiple boats, you know, doing the same thing. And that would be my concern if we left it open that way, so.
Yeah, and that's why we did close that with a five year. Exclusive for the riverboat.
Yeah, my concern is.
A paddle boat.
It's it's something like the the previous pontoon that was operating there because that you could you could come in with a lot less money and compete with for a lot less overhead. And that was, that's my concern because if that boat was to be resurrected and start operating out of the city. Docks, you know, they could probably.
I'm concerned with, I think they're totally different businesses. I think you're going to be offering such a great experience that that's going to be a totally different. You know, a little paddle boat ride is not, or a pontoon boat ride is different than what.
And if I could clarify, so the the prior operation that Ms. Torrance is referring to operated with a franchise agreement from the city also. Right? Because it would use the dock space in the city and did it so. If another vendor wanted to come in and do what she's suggesting, it'd have to come in front of the city council for a franchise agreement at that time. Before they could do that.
Okay, what are y'all's thoughts? This is.
I'm okay with the with the. I'm okay with the five year exclusive, just the regular exclusive, however, however.
Paddle boat.
Yeah, for the paddle boat and the the slip. Just to keep it simple.
Okay. No, no exclusive on a pontoon. Cause that's, it's.
I mean, for, for, for the type of operation that, that they're running, I, I could see where a pontoon would be an issue, but they would have to come back before council to get that approval.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so five-year exclusive, and then if anybody else wanted to come, say thirty, forty folks on a pontoon boat, that company has to come back.
That's correct.
Okay, as long as that's the way that I'm okay.
Is that how many people they fit on that pontoon?
Like, I don't know.
I never.
So it, we're.
I think we have consensus on the five-year, um, for the, you're, for the, the council member Urban, before we move forward on this.
So it, um, is this something we can move forward with, that we can put this in agreement and approve it?
Yeah, so typically when we've done these before is essentially, we can rewrite the agreement. The council authorizes the mayor to basically work with us to make sure the language is fine, and then he can sign off on the agreement so we don't have to bring it back.
Okay, I'm good with that. Yeah.
All right, so we have consensus on, uh,
Yeah, so we're gonna.
Exclusive five-year paddle boat and to, for a five-year boat slip for the pull boat.
Yes.
With some sponsorship.
And then, and then the nine, and then the ninety day provision that we talked about, the ninety days to commence operations.
Yes, sir. And can we get a motion on that? To include that language into the franchise agreement?
Motion to approve is discussed.
Motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Welcome.
I believe that is all for the consent agenda. All right, next we have the citizen forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided in the, by the, to the presi, presiding officer prior to, or as soon as practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. And first we have Mr. Mark Cantley.
We have a, a spokesperson that I'm going to yield to.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Uh, do we have a spokesperson? Who, what's his name? Maybe, did he sign a form? Keith Smears, yes, sir. Yeah, I would not have pronounced that right. Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Keith Smears, two oh seven flag of the court. Um, I'm part of the board of directors of the HOA Savannah Park. The issue I'd like to talk about today is the trail that's being put in along Rummel Road and the Savannah Park property the city's looking to buy. We have been trying to work in good faith to sell the property, you guys. Uh, we've brought up several times the concern we have for the opening of that whole pond side that is there where the trail is now going to run and have continued to get pushed back from the people when dealing with where we've been told, no, we can't do a fence, we can't do a fence, we can't do a fence. You guys have been talking about safety and security here tonight. There was just unfortunate lady in Kissimmee who attacked by an alligator. She was out on the waterways this week. Two calls for alligators in that pond. So this is a very serious concern we have. We're also concerned about the fact that now this whole backside of people's houses is open up to people to come and just, you know, basically probably people's backyards, you know? I don't know how many of you people have open backyards, closed backyards. How would you like it if all of a sudden that protecting you had for your backyard wasn't there? That's another big concern that we had. That's part of the thing. We were told from the council who's representing the city that that talk with selling the property that the HOA currently has, has nothing to do with the adjacent property. Um, we feel it kind of does. But, you know, I can only go by what he was said. Uh, the other.
Ken, Ken, I'm sorry, I'm going to clarify. What were you saying about the, what property?
Okay, so the HOA, the city's looking to buy the plot that is right there on Pacquinn and Rummel.
Right.
To continue the trail where they want to put the trail. Which, again, the citizens, most of the citizens, most residents in our neighborhood are open to that. They're actually very receptive about having a trail there. They're, you know, hey, we got several people who like to walk, get down to the, you know, get down to lakefront. It's nice. To do that, unfortunately, I guess you guys hit some snags with running along Rummel and decided to move into the right-of-way, which is right on the pond, the north side of our pond. The pond is HOA property. We take care of it. Um, unfortunately, if you put the trail where we were told without any kind of barrier, then that now creates a safety concern. You know, safety, not just for people walking by and have kids that go, oh, look, pond, run down. Cause that's, you know, that's where the natural vegetation is to keep it away from the home side, is that's where the natural vegetation is. That's where alligators like to be. So if something's going to happen, it's going to happen on that side. And then, so we're, we were basically told that a fence was out of the question. Um, I don't know why a fence was out of the question. Um, but we, that's what we were told originally.
When you say originally, like, oh, some, sometime back?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, like, a couple of months back, when we were talking with, um, people from the city who had came out, um, people who were involved in the product.
Are, are you up to date with the conversations now and where it's at with about a fence?
Um, last.
Cause I know there's been a lot of conversation, cause I've walked it with Mark.
Yes, I, I know that there have been some.
Teresa many times.
And that's part of the other thing too. I know that there's been some council members who have been open to an idea of a fence. We've sent a proposal. Um, it's pretty much this here.
Right.
Which we were told, this is where we got the response because that section is not part of the property that the city is looking to buy. That, that was not up for discussion.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct.
I can, I can pull open my email.
I can honestly say that I've seen the emails back and forth between the city and the city attorney and everybody else, and there has been discussion about a fence. So I think maybe you're, got old information. I've got my own email, sir. But I will tell you, the discussions aren't over yet. So I think it's a little premature to act like there's no.
Oh, no, no, I'm not acting like there's, no, I'm, I'm bringing it to you guys' attention now because I.
Well, we, we're well aware, sir.
Tell you.
We appreciate that.
The, the impression I got from the last letter from the response that I received from your attorney over there was that the adjacent property was not part of the discussion.
It's not part of the, the purchase of that property. It, I know we've spoken, I know I have spoken with a number of the residents, and, and what is your position? You're a property owner in there or the HOA president?
No, 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 I'm, I'm part of the board of, of directors there. I do live there. I live inside of there.
And I think that's the problem. There's so many voices coming out of that subdivision where it's, who's the actual person?
And that is.
Dealing directly with the city attorney. That's who I'm concerned with.
Yes.
Um, city attorney, I'll let you go ahead and speak on this.
Well, we obviously have been dealing with the attorney for the HOAs, so, uh, and all the correspondence we've had is with their attorney. So I'm dealing with it. What I think is important to recognize is the city right now has the absolute right to put the trail along that part that the gentleman referred to where the pond is. That's right of way. The city can build the trail there right now without doing anything. So.
And that's fully understood. We, we understand that.
But if I could, so that's when we refer to them, that those two are not, they are connected because obviously the city needs that other vacant piece to basically finish the trail. But there, but the point that they've been asking for where the fence is, is on that area where the city can build without having to do anything else. And that's why we, we, we've advised their council that we, it would not be part of, as you recall, the city has already authorized to, for us to pursue eminent domain. That issue with regard to the fence on that portion of the trail, trail area would not be part of the condemnation proceeding because it's on a different lot. And that's what we've tried to explain. We have, as you pointed out, Mayor, and you've seen the emails back and forth. The city staff has been working with the, through the, through us, with the attorney for the HOA, uh, has made a couple of offers back. Uh, we have offered in terms of dollars considerably more than the property is appraised for. And, uh, and are, and are continuing, continuing to work with their attorney to, to see if we can come to some sort of amicable resolution.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I don't think the negotiations are over. That's what I'm saying. I think it's premature to say that we've said no, because if that's months of information.
I apologize.
Yeah, I have up to date. I get the, I get copied on all their emails.
If I made it seem like the council said no, I did not mean to.
And, and the city's not saying no yet either, because I, I know I've spoken with them ahead of time and, and I know it's still going back and forth because as of probably a month ago, there was the idea floated about a brick wall. But then, uh, you guys would have to bring your pond up to date. And yes, of course, it'd be kind of expensive. But your pond is, uh, has eroded over the years, and that would have to come back into a compliance as well with the state. Am I correct with that?
There's, there's a lot of technical construction issues related to, as I understand it, related to putting the fence in that area.
I, I was referring to the, the wall, which is why we couldn't, the wall is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
Cause I, I've really tried to turn over every stone to help you guys with all of this. I'm still in communication.
Yeah, and, and that's appreciated. Um, it's just the fact of, yes, there's definitely some people that were in, some residents that were very much, we want a wall, we want it to be brick wall. Um, we have since had some discussions among these homeowners, and we've come to the consensus of if we can put one of those aluminum, you know, spearhead type fences, which we've actually priced out, and they're not that expensive. It's actually cheaper to do that than a chain link fence. That we could run that along that bank and give it, you know, not, and come, as from my understanding, if you did a brick wall, you'd have to come ten feet in from the edge of the pond. And that, I understand, would be a really major problem.
You have an estimate, you said, on the aluminum?
Roughly, roughly about thirty.
Give that to whoever the spokesperson is, the attorney, the HOA president, to, and that, it can be part of the negotiations and whatever.
But, and from, my understanding right now from what he just said too, is that because it's not part of the property that we're selling, that.
Legally, it's not, and that's, that's the difference. It's this, he's the attorney and he's handling the, the legal, so this, the legal purchase of that parcel, we're talking about something else that probably the city already owns, and you've got great council members up here who are, I think, really want to look after the best interest of the citizens and want to put something there that, that helps. And I do understand, I've walked.
Yeah, that's what we're looking.
We looked at a number of trees that are going to be, come out and, um.
So that, that's, yeah, that's first and foremost.
And I think it is better than a road going through there. But I, I think we can make it better, and I, I'm all about making it safe and secure because we don't want people going on that trail and going down the pond, and I definitely don't want anybody eaten by an alligator. Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, I have had the chance to speak with Mark and, and, and folks out there. Um, I do think that the, you know, we kind of got two separate issues, right? We got the issue with the, the, the property and then the, the barrier. Um, for the record, I am in supportive of, of, of assisting with some type of barrier, um, that I have spoken to staff. Um, I'm about that as far as my position. Um, whatever we need to do, um, to, to work in that direction, I'm in favor of. So I'm on the record.
And that's basically all we're really asking. We're just asking to sit there and have this not just thrown off to the side, which is the feeling that a lot of the residents are getting.
Who, who's throwing, I don't, I've never seen that.
I don't want to name names, but there's some people that have felt like it, it's a lot of no offense lip service.
Okay.
Now, there's definitely people who sit there and are very appreciative of.
The city up here, they've got my phone number. If you can please call me, because I've spoken to a, a number of residents and they know they can pick up the phone and talk to me as well, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And, uh, I, I'm one of five up here, as you can see.
And, and Mr. Mayor, before we, we move on, I just want to make sure that the city council is aware that staff who are the ones that are looking at the issues related to barriers and stuff in that area have pointed out that it isn't as simply as putting up a fence area to be there. There's some technical engineering design issues related to the pond. There's a lot of other moving parts with regards to than simply putting in a fence and dealing with that. So, um, I, I understand that the council would like to explore that, and we certainly can, and Veronica can work with these people, the staff that we can work on to do that. And we can bring back to you what we understand being for everybody, what the people that do this have told us are going to be the, uh, you know, some of the issues that might be very difficult to just simply put a, a fence in that area.
City Manager.
Thank you. Um, if, if I could, I sent an email on Friday to the council explaining where, where we were at, and I, I do think that I could understand where you're feeling like from staff's perspective, we're not really moving anymore, and, and because we're, we're not. If I could just read the email that I sent to you, because I think if council wants to, to move in a different direction, I think we really do need direction on, on this. Um, so, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I have discussed Savannah Park's requests with legal and staff. I cannot recommend the additional fence cost of twenty-five thousand dollars plus engineering costs based on the operational challenges, additional engineering costs plus, plus possible extra implementation cost, ongoing maintenance, lifetime maintenance cost. And the fact that we are already offering more than double the property value of sixteen thousand eight hundred. If the HOA wants a fence, they could use the extra eighteen thousand two hundred dollars we are paying for them to put the fence themselves on their property. I am concerned about the public perception of us paying so much more than the small property purchases is worth when we already own the majority of this property and have the legal right to build the trail. Operational challenges that would arise from the fence. Portions of the existing trail would require professional redesign to accommodate the fence placement, resulting in additional engineering costs beyond the initial project scope, which could cause additional time resulting in the, the city losing the grant. The proposed fence location would necessitate regular maintenance edging along the entire eight hundred foot perimeter on both sides, requiring city personnel to access HOA pond property for routine maintenance activities. So if you could give us direction, it, that would help with the next steps.
Yeah, so I don't think anybody said no on a fence yet, right? Have we said no, or are we saying it's complicated?
I, I'm not the staff person talking, so I can't say. I, I would, I would.
Do we have?
No, we did, Mr. Mayor, we did, we did communicate with the HOA attorneys that a fence in that area, based on many of the things that staff, staff, that Veronica just read to you, staff was not willing to recommend that as part of the resolution.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
The only issue with us putting in a fence is that the right-of-way that the city owns ends at the top of the bank for the pond. We have no place to put a fence. We cannot take any money out of our own pockets and play, pay for a fence. It is not our property to put a fence. That's why we're asking the city to do it.
We can't take some of the, you guys couldn't take some of the money for the, the piece that we're purchasing from you?
We don't have a problem doing that, but that's not.
And that's where I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I just want to open the conversation. I've been trying to understand where we're at.
Taking some of the money that the city's offering, because we know that this is.
That early on.
You know, this isn't something that should be fully on the city because this is also for a small group of homeowners. But at the same time, you know, you're, you're talking about, you're, you're going to take up all the land that's there. You already own the right-of-way, and then you're going to take up the HOA property, which comes up to a homeowner's property that has a easement for the lift station to where we have no place to put a fence.
You're saying there's no place to put a fence on your property?
If, if you sit.
That's, okay, and that's, now I'm getting, now I'm getting all the information.
Yes. If, if with the right-of-way and the HOA property being bought, the HOA does not have anywhere that we can sit there and put a fence.
Okay, so one, we're still talking about a fence. It's not dead in the water. You guys are willing to help pay for it. That's good. At least when we're there. Um, can we talk to engineering or the, uh, Kevin and see if we can, if they can fit on their property or if not on our property, whatever?
So what I would recommend, listening to this conversation, and I love that you guys are willing to work with us, um, I, I would, my big concern is the grant. I don't want to lose the grant funding. If we can proceed and work with you using the extra, um, eighteen thousand and for the fence, because we also have to do engineering, whether it's on my property or, or your property.
Mm-hmm.
There has to be engineering design and then the work that goes along with that. And then I think we could, we could probably find an amicable solution. But the, the bigger issue is the timing of the grant. And my, my big concern was how do we pay almost double what it appraised at? And then also an extra twenty-five thousand for the fence plus engineering costs, plus whatever it was going to cost to, to shore it up.
Well, and, and that's understandable, but, but again, part of it also should fall onto the city because as I said earlier, you guys have been up here talking about safety, how you guys want to be safe and secure and all that. And you are opening up this, not only the neighborhood, but the pond to everybody who walks through where, yes, we pulled two alligators out of that lake just this past week, two of them. And yes, we see alligators all the time. We live in Florida. How do you know if there's an alligator in, in the water in Florida? Go down, touch the water, is it wet? Yes, there you go, alligator, okay? We all know that. That doesn't mean that you don't have kids that are going to go, oh, look, let me go skip a water, skip a rock in the water. You know, they do it at the wrong time, and we've had incidences like that here in Florida where people have been at the wrong time, wrong place, and bad things have happened. And we don't want that. We want people to be safe, secure. If we put up some kind of barrier there, it keeps people from going down there. And yes, there are added costs of maintenance, but I think the added cost of maintenance is minor compared to possibility of saving somebody from being either. possibility of saving somebody from being either seriously hurt or killed.
Okay.
Not, not even to mention the possibility of, we've just had people running around our neighborhood with masks on, trying to check into cars. That they found one of the masks on the backside by the pond. So there, if you open up that whole space, now that whole backside is very visible from rumble as, oh, there's a whole bunch of houses here.
I, I do understand your concerns and, um, I, I, it's the first time I've ever seen you or talked to you and you didn't, my phone number is public, so you can call me too. And Teresa does, has no fear of calling me.
She's let us know.
Hold on, I can't, just give me a second. No, just not yet, please. Teresa, please sit down. Um, Councilmember Urban.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say, um, uh, I've been paying close attention to the email correspondences going back and forth. Everybody up here is, um, open to listening to residents and I know we all answer our phone calls, our, our, our direct phone numbers are publicly, publicly posted on the website. So we all want to work together to come up with a solution that works for this neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. A lot of wonderful people. We want to work together to come up with a solution that works for everybody. We're not trying to just give lip service or, or railroad anybody. We want to, uh, want to find a solution. And I, I know everybody up here, uh, is just, is looking out for the interest of, of the residents here.
Well, and I appreciate that. And, and again, like I said, the, the impression, at least my impression that I can definitely say for a fact is my impression is that you guys are open to talk about a fence. But there's a contingent that we are directly dealing with that is not. So it seems like two sides are not talking, which is the reason.
Now I understand a lot.
This is why I'm here tonight, is to bring this up, because I, I think it needs to be brought to your guys' attention, because, you know, we do feel like you having come out, for one, to even take the time to be out there to see what the situation is.
Yeah.
Shows that you're interested in what's going on. So.
We walked right through all those woods.
Yeah, which unfortunately, a lot of it's gonna be gone if you put a trail up, but, you know.
Yeah. If you can please get my card, we have, Kelly, do you have one of my cards? And give him my phone number, please. Please give me a call anytime you need.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that.
Uh, let me, hold on Teresa, we have a couple more people. Is everybody done talking on this that filled out a form? Everybody's, Rosemary? Mark, you did fill out a form. Teresa, you can speak after the form, folks, yeah. Yes, sir, Mark.
Sir, can you come to the podium, please?
Yep. So the ones that filled out the form, Teresa, we have to go, go through a process here, please. Mark, uh, name and address for the record.
Uh, I think it's Mark Cantley. I live at 207 Memphis Place, St. Cloud, in Savannah Park. I guess the one point that I, that I personally feel is that we share. I mean, this is a litigious world we live in. And it being homeowner property, we're concerned about our liability. And we believe that the city shares that liability with us, right? Because, I mean, we, we being first, there's no question. But the city is bringing the pedestrian, the, the pedestrian traffic in, on top of that pond, as you've seen, with no protection. So the next person listed, I believe, would be the city. It's just speculation, but in one person's opinion. So I believe that the city has a vested interest in the fence, just as we do. So, and, and that's the one thing I wanted to point out. I mean, you've seen it. We both know that it's necessary, right? And how we get there, everybody in the community is willing to do what we need to do, right? To get this deal done, right? And get the fence so that we're protected and you are protected.
Yeah, I know. I, I just didn't know the conversation stopped. I thought, I thought we were all still trying to get there with the fence. So, yeah, thanks, Mark. Uh, next we have Rosemary. No, Ruth? You spoke? All right. We have, um, let's see. That's definitely not that one. All right, Teresa, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone, as city mayor and all council members, I think you all know me very well. Teresa Daherty, Two Make and Way in Savannah Park. And myself and my husband, we are one of the longest residents in Savannah Park. We have lived in the same home for 36 years, going on 37. And we prided ourselves that at the rear of our property, we knew we were never gonna have any rear neighbors. But your suggestion, what your city is supposed to do is opening up our security, our sound barrier. And we are gonna be wide open to the world behind us that we never had. Most of the residents, maybe in the last 10 years, but I have lived there 36 years. And it really, I'm not opposed to the walk path, don't get me wrong. But the last city letter that came to our, eh, attorney stating that there was gonna be no fence and it was gonna be up to us is totally disgusting. I'm disgusted with, if you all agree with that, it is absolutely disgusting. Opening our little 74 homes. We have 74 homes in our small community. And you were prepared to give up 74 home security and the families in our neighborhood for a walk path. How many people are gonna wa, I am not opposed to the walk path, don't get me wrong, but I'm totally disgusted with the conversation. Because the letter we received from the staff was totally out of this, and I sent you a copy of it, Chris. And it was totally wrong. And damn, you've known me for years. And when I read that letter from you to our attorney, that there was gonna be no fence, no barricade. And we're gonna be wide open to Rummel Road. You all should be disgusted. And if you don't do something about a barricade, you know what? This city is going to ruin. Because honestly, it is, you're in my backyard. You are in my backyard. And you all need to sit up and pay attention to the residents. And I am one of those residents that lived here, has many businesses in this town, and you all know me for many, 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 many years. I'm an old fart in this town right now, compared to a lot of people. But I'm just being very blunt with you to sit up and look at your residents. This is my backyard. This is the people that we, in my backyard. And if you don't, and I, it is not our responsibility, Veronica, to put a fence up. You guys are taking our backyard and opening it up. It is the city's responsibility to put that fence up. And I know I'm out of time, but I don't care. Okay? So I am just telling you, and Chris, you know me a long time, this is absolutely disgusting. If you don't take charge and put the fence up.
All right, thank you, Teresa. I appreciate that. I, I think a lot of the anger is premature. Because I, I think we just went through and said, we're willing to speak with the citizens. And you have a, a council that's willing to work with you. And so I think cooler heads will prevail on this. So thank you, Teresa. I appreciate you sharing your comments. Uh, do we have anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Name and address for the. Neighborhood too. I live on Eight Make and Way.
I've got one place too, I'm sorry.
Darryl Derrickson.
Hey, um.
I know that, but yeah.
I just want to know, cause they got that ditch runs right through there. I'm just giving another opinion. Why don't they just put a culvert? Cause it's on the front side of the pond, I mean, uh, uh, road. If they fill that ditch in with a culvert, just go right over top of that culvert and put a sidewalk there.
That ditch belongs to the property owners across the street, if I'm correct.
Yeah, but, uh, county used to maintain that back in the day. They used to take a, um, ditch.
I only know that because Mark, I went out, went out, when I went out there and the guy across the street, he was like, no, I own that ditch. So.
Yeah, but why ain't they maintaining it then? Because if it does rain a lot, that water comes from running me, fills that dish back up and brings our pond up and our road floods and nobody can get out of our neighborhood. So they need something to fix the ditch then. Somebody should be maintaining the ditch also. But I just wonder, why couldn't they do that?
I, I think they're just going over the existing right away for the road, for Cypress Avenue. Instead of putting the road, they're putting the, the sidewalk. Th- this happened before I got on, so obviously we're, um, but I, I, I like that there's gonna be a trail. I do believe there needs to be some kind of a barrier from the pond to the trail. I, I'm in favor of that, but we just, we haven't gotten there yet.
You know how many homeless people will be up in there at nighttime and everything else?
That is my concern.
A lot of police activity coming in there and helping us out, so.
And that's where I think we're still kind of in the negotiations between the, the citizens and the, and a fence. And I really think we need something.
Exactly.
And I know Mark had a great idea.
Because if a kid comes down his little bike.
We'll go down that path too.
If a little kid comes down on his bike and decides to go fishing there, who's responsible if he falls in there and gets hurt or some, Savannah Park or is gonna be responsible or is it a city gonna be responsible for it? So.
No, I totally understand. I can see kids going down there if they're on their bikes and they'll go down to the pond.
Yeah, cause it's quiet right now. That's why I built that house there. Nobody's behind me. It's quiet. There's a buffer there for the rumble road. I don't hear all the noise and all that, so I enjoy it. So y'all could do it. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. A city attorney.
Yeah. And if I could just, it might, if it's a consensus of the city council that they'd like staff to go back and work on the issue of putting a barrier in, then we can just certainly work on that. And that's simply what it is. And so that's the consensus of it all. And we will, yeah, just respectfully to, to the neighbors, our role is to deal with their attorney.
Yes.
And not even the individuals, there are any attorneys for the association, and that's who we deal with. So, um, I, the attorney for their association has not communicated any of this stuff to us.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if y'all can relay your, your, um.
But we'll be happy to work with staff and come up with a different proposal.
Yeah, obviously, your, your suggestions, if you can relay that over to your attorney as well and your HOA president, then, um, yes, Keith.
Sorry, um, just, just so you know, it has been relayed to our attorney. Um, I don't know, um, when he was gonna get it to you, but there has been information relayed to you by, or our, our attorney does have information. So I, I don't know how often he talks to you. Do you need to talk to our attorney about it? Because you can always talk right to me about it.
I can't.
Why not?
He's our attorney. He has to talk to the attorney.
The rules of the Florida bar prohibit me from talking to you directly in private conversation, since you have an attorney.
Okay, so everything has to go through the attorney?
As long as you have an attorney, yes.
Okay.
It's always the lawyers.
Hey, I'm learning here, so I don't, you know, I don't know. I'm just, so.
I like my license.
But yes, our attorney does have, uh, uh, information that he's supposed to be getting to you. Um, and I will definitely contact him and want to know that he needs to get that to you.
I certainly will reach out to him tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate all of your concerns and sharing that with us. So, thank y'all. Do we have anyone else who want to speak on this item about the Savannah Park? All right, next up, we have Robert Williams. Regarding the Jammers Music Building. And name and address for the record, please.
Robert Williams. I own 1000 Pennsylvania Avenue, over here on a corner of Pennsylvania and 10th. Jammers Music Center. The reason I want to talk to you guys, it all started when you did your renovations. I was all excited about it and it looks beautiful. But you really, what you did around my building was terrible. First of all, I have a driveway.
Where'd you do this? Sorry, it was before me.
I have a driveway that I can't get in anymore, because you put a parking spot there and you planted a tree in front of it. Which I could get around the tree, but I can't get around a car. And people don't care. If I pull in my driveway, someone will pull in and they'll block me in. And they're probably sitting in the Legion drinking all day. I can't use my driveway. My tenant makes custom window treatments. They need that driveway to load product going in and out of 1002 Pennsylvania Avenue. You know where we're loading? We're loading in the middle of the street, because there's nowhere to park. And I have a driveway. That's crazy. I, I want to get my driveway back, if it's possible.
Yes, sir. Have you spoken with city staff?
Oh, I've talked to you guys for two years now.
No, city staff. No, well, I'm, first thing I've heard about this, and that's why.
Really? They keep sending me from person to person to person. The officer here knows. I've been down talking to him several times.
Okay.
Okay, so that's.
Question. I'm just asking if you've gone down that path first, because I'm, I've, you know, I've only been here for about six months now and I've never heard of this. And, and my phone is available. Kelly, if you got another card, please. Kelly, he's got my business card with my phone number. So when you say you guys, you guys, you guys, I want to know that you've actually spoken.
Personally, then.
And I don't think you have though, have you?
No, but I've talked, I've talked to all your staff. I would think somebody would say something to you, you know. I've, Parks and Rec came over and met with me. People from engineering came over and met with me. And he said, oh yeah, we'll, we'll get back with you. We'll get back. Nobody ever gets back with me. It just goes from one person to the other, to the other.
Okay.
That's my first issue. My second.
There's two issues. You want a parking spot?
I want my driveway back.
You want your driveway back. Okay, there's a tree.
So what I want you to do, there used to be a no parking sign there, do not block the driveway. And when you guys came in and did the renovation, I told them, I said, you're, you're putting a parking spot in front of my driveway. They said, don't worry, we'll take care of it. Well, they never did.
Oh, I understand. Okay. Is it 10th Street or Pennsylvania?
Pennsylvania.
The Pennsylvania, because you're on both, right?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want a clarification on that. City, uh, manager, do you have any comments on that? Have you heard anything about that?
I, in, a while ago, when we first did, when we first did the project, yeah. Um, looking at the, at the aerial, I, I see what he's saying, you know, if the council wanted us to eliminate a parking space. You know, that, that would be, that would be the solution if the council wants to eliminate a, a parking space.
My, my tenant that's in 1002, I have Jammers Music Center and 1000 in the front of my building. 1002, I have an interior decorating shop that makes custom window treatments. And they're ready to move out, because they told me there's nowhere to park. Unless you get there at five o'clock in the morning and to get that spot right in front of my building, the spots are gone.
Yes, sir. I, I think you've made your case on this.
Okay, I made my point on that. Okay. So now I'll get to my second point. My second point is public safety.
Let's, do you need consensus from us? Are you good?
I do need consensus. I don't have consensus.
What is, uh, so?
To explore it. I mean, that's.
Well, I mean, the, I, I can tell you that.
Cause I don't know the site. I don't.
It, it would, it would, it would require eliminating a parking space.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
I know that like this is out of the norm. I, I feel that you're down there a lot. I've seen you, uh, you know, shaking your head and whatnot. I mean, is it something that you'd think for the downtown, it would better itself? I mean, you're out there on, on foot all the time and, and helped his situation.
You need to come to. Good evening, Corporal Fugier. I believe this would, uh, definitely help out the business owner and not affect, uh, the other citizens and community, yeah.
Okay.
If, by eliminating one parking space.
And either if you made half of it maybe a motorcycle parking and block off my driveway, so we can get in and out of the driveway.
So the whole driveway is blocked off there, is that what you're concerned?
It is. It is. Looking, looking at, I got a third.
Robert, I've never heard of that, and that's why.
Well, I apologize.
When you say you, I'm like, did we have this conversation?
Well, yeah, no, not with you personally, but I've, I've talked to so many people about this and I just keep getting pushed to one person after another. My next main issue, and this is.
One second. I think on that item, Councilmember Urban has something to say.
I just wanted to say I, I've, I've never had the opportunity to speak with you either, but, um, wanted to reemphasize all of our direct phone numbers are on the website, so please reach out to us anytime. We're happy to help. And yeah, I learned to, to play drums at, at your place when I was a kid, so.
I met with engineering. They came and met with me about two weeks ago. And I said, I'm gonna hear back from you guys, ain't I? And they said, oh yeah, we'll call you back. Not a word. Not hearing from nobody.
Yeah, I know all of us are very approachable up here. Okay. So just pick up the phone.
All right, so I'll come over and sit and talk with you one day personally, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, you can schedule it. If you, you call city hall, you can schedule an appointment.
I'll do that. But if I can get my driveway back, that would be fantastic.
Yes, sir.
It'll save my tenant. And I carry a lot of lumber in and out of my building, so I'm parking like 50, 75 feet away, lugging all my lumber into my building.
I got consensus.
We got consensus.
Okay. All right. The next issue is the most important issue. When you did the street on 10th Street, I used to have a 10 foot sidewalk. You cut me down to a five foot sidewalk. You have cars parking right on top.
Oh, sir, we need the microphone to hear you. That, it's gotta get into the record.
You have cars parked right on top of my building. When they parallel park on 10th Street, they're parking here and my building is right here. When they open their passenger doors, there's like a foot to my building.
And you got people wanting.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you need to stay behind the microphone.
I'm just trying to show you. Okay. I can't believe you can't hear me. It's, it's a small room.
No, it's the microphone. It's gotta be for the record as well. Yes, sir.
But anyhow, um, my biggest issue is when you put, you put the parking there, I have five feet to my building. And then you came in with the light poles, which are beautiful. I love them. But that cut me down to a three foot sidewalk. cut me down to a three-foot sidewalk. Because I have two light poles, I have two oak trees, five feet from my building, stupidest thing I've ever seen in my life. And when all the leaves and everything fall, it's a frickin' mess, man. I blow all your leaves out into the street. That's what I do. I'm not going to pick them up every day.
Okay, so you're saying that the, the parking spot's too close to the sidewalk and, okay.
Too close to the building, right on top of my building.
If I ask the city manager, if we can all get the information on that, just so we can look at it.
But the biggest issue, I haven't even got to it yet. It's.
Oh, I thought that was the biggest.
No, no, no. I have, I have a lot of people coming in and out of my building, taking music lessons.
Yes, sir.
And what I want to know is, what am I going to do when somebody walks out of my door and gets run over by an electric bike flying down the sidewalk in that little three-foot section that you gave me? What am I going to do when that happens?
I, I do not believe they should be riding bikes on that sidewalk. And I believe that's a police department issue that.
And I went down and see St. Cloud Police Department, and they told me, oh, you're, you're allowed to ride electric bikes on the sidewalk. That's what they told me. Your officers told me down.
Well, we'd be more than happy to get you the information, um, the police department's information. They can talk to you about that.
But how, how are we going to correct it?
I believe the Corporal Fugier will look into that.
You know, I'm really worried. If somebody walks out of my building right at the right time.
I understand.
They're going to get mowed over.
And that's why we're going to look into it, yes, sir. Thank you very much, Robert.
Okay, you're blowing me off, ain't you?
Well, no, you, it seems like you got about 10 minutes, and everybody gets three. I will, I will tell you. Thank you very much. We're going to look in. Well, Robert, we said we're going to look into everything. I've never met you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. All right, next up, we have Don Gray.
Hi, my name's Don Gray, the 409 Florida Avenue. Um, I want to address the gay pride thing that you're doing out at that ranch. I am so thankful to hear Councilman Gilbert talk about being concerned about our taxpayers' dollars. I don't want my taxpayer dollars go to support what has been considered a perverted lifestyle for many years in our country. Now, the one thing that really bothers me more than anything is a petting zoo for children. A lot of people want to know why these, um, what do they call them? The, uh, people that dress like women? Yeah. Um, what their purpose for doing that is. I don't know if anybody here has heard this, but in San Francisco, there's a gay men's choir. And in June of 1970, or 2017, they wrote this song. Would whoever causes one, or let me see, "You say we all lead lives you don't respect, but just frighten, just frighten. You think we'll corrupt your kids if our agenda goes unchecked. Funny, just once, you are correct. We'll convert your children. Happens bit by bit, quietly and subly, and you'll even barely notice it. Just like you're worried, they'll change their group of friends, you won't approve where they go at night, and you'll be disgusted when you start learning the things that they're learning online in from their site. We'll convert your children. Yes, we will. Reaching one and all, there's really no escaping it, because even grandma likes RuPaul. The world is getting kinder. Gen Z is gayer than Grindr. We're coming for them. We're coming for your children. The gay agenda is coming home. The gay agenda is here." Now, you talk about small time or small-town, uh, living. I don't understand why you want to promote, and we were told by a county councilman that the city council of St. Cloud is promoting this, this perverted event. I don't want my taxpayers doing that. My taxpayer money have anything to do with that. And I can tell you that the majority of Christians in this community don't want this either. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Don. Your lights on, Deputy Mayor? No, sorry. There was some. And we have Stephen Barker, Barber. And can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Stephen Barber, 920 Indiana Avenue. Uh, very quickly, this is not a personal axe to grind. This is coming from a standpoint of, uh, responsibility and standards of righteousness. I want to address the threefold hypocrisy and irresponsibility of the city of St. Cloud. First of all, fiscally, the Ted Broda Memorial Park put in, you put in a new skateboard park at a cost of $1,068,000. Meanwhile, there's a citywide deterioration and dilapidation of our sidewalks and roads all over this town. And I know this because unlike a lot of people, I have to go slower because I ride a bicycle for my transportation. That brings up the second thing. Morally, you have the Sand Hill Crane adopted as the official city bird of St. Cloud as of 2018. The city of St. Cloud ensures protection of this threatened species while failing to protect its human residents like me, who have been hit twice on my bicycle by these lawless drivers who habitually run stop signs, among other things. Something needs to be done about this. It's an epidemic. But thirdly, and most importantly, following Mr. Gray, the spiritual irresponsibility hypocrisy. In 2021, my church, uh, St. Cloud Missionary Baptist Church entered a prey, a float in the St. Cloud, Cloud Christmas Parade. It depicted the birth, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. Afterward, we were told by the city, you can't have that kind of a float in the Christmas parade when that's what it's about. And yet, the same city, this city, supports and promotes the public display of abominable satanic perversion and depravity with this Proud in the Cloud event, compliments of the St. Cloud Pride Alliance. And I want to read this to you. Proverbs 8:13, I was just reading today. "The fear of the Lord is the hate evil. Pride, arrogance, and the evil way and the forward mouth do I hate." That's what Almighty God, the Lord Jesus Christ says. And I say this from the authority of this holy book, my King James Bible. So what I want to say to you folks, and I don't have, like I said, a personal axe to grind. I have nothing against any of you personally. But what's being done with this display, these drag queens, they have an agenda. And I would ask you to, you look at what's going on in America. Uh, they just busted this group, the 764, who are predatory pedophiles. That's what this drag queen stuff, I don't care what they say on their website, they have this forward mouth talking out both sides of their mouth. They say it's family-friendly, but yet anybody that thinks men with men and wometh with women with women is normal and family-friendly, they, their, their judgment is skewed, to say the least. And honestly, they have no right to be doing what they're doing. And so what the city of St. Cloud, instead of, in essence, what you're saying is, we hate Jesus and we love Satan by supporting this. What you ought to be doing is telling this group, you're not welcome here. Get out and don't come back. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. City manager.
I just wanted to clarify that the city of St. Cloud does not, um, determine who can and cannot be in the Christmas parade. That's done by the St. Cloud Chamber. Thank you.
An interesting meeting, Mayor. All right, are there anyone else in the audience? I'm sorry. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak during the citizens forum? Yes, sir. Scott, you're on, you're talking about the, a different, during an item number, right? Not during citizens forum, though. Your, your, your discussions on the boating ordinance, right?
Well, I was, on the agenda you have online doesn't match the agenda that's here, so.
The, you, no, you're going to discuss about the boating ordinance, right? I've got your, your paper. Okay, yeah, this is, this is anything that's not on the agenda. So you're, I've got yours up here for that, when we get to that point. So, no, we'll go ahead and conclude the citizens forum, but you can come up and talk when we talk about this item.
Okay.
That's good. Yes, sir. Sorry, Dan writes the rules around here.
Well.
He'll yell at me. He'll tell me, hey, they can't talk about.
I don't write them.
All right, our next section will be public hearings. Madam Clerk, please read item number one into the record.
Public hearing for resolution number 2025-057R. A resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, many resolution number 2024-120R, which adopted the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the city of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and required revenues available for the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds, not including the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding for the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the fund.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director. As indicated, this is budget amendment number four to our current year fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. The city manager has certified funds are available to appropriate for these projects. And the summary of the budget amendment items is as follows. A total of $20,850 in revenue from state grants for police for the FDLE online sting operations, uh, and grant program and expenditures for related computer equipment for $20,850. This is general fund. A total of $50,000 in revenue from state grants, police for another FDLE, uh, safe grant, and expenditures for overtime contractual services and investigations, and that's also the general fund. A total of $25,999 in revenue from federal grants, uh, public safety for a justice assistance grant, and expenditures for patrol bikes for $25,999. That is also the general fund. A total of $49,791 in general fund contingency for salary and benefits for an executive administrative assistant for, uh, city council members, and also the necessary office renovations and supplies. That is the general fund as well. A total of $122,046 in revenue from prior year fund balance and expenditures for the same amount for the purchase of two police department drone pods. Uh, this is coming from the 1% surcharge fund. A total of $1,556,845 in additional funds to complete project PS 2104, that is the fire station 32 rebuild. Uh, 1,056,845 is coming from the 1% surcharge contingency, and $500,000 is coming from additional fire impact fee projected revenue. Uh, we've, we're collecting at a pace in our impact fees, uh, well above our original estimates. A total of $291,975 in revenue from prior year fund balance and expenditures for operating supplies for trash and recycle carts, uh, for the potential newly annexed areas. This is coming from the sanitation impact fee fund. Um, that way, we're prepared, uh, for, um, those areas. A total of $1,113,394 in revenue from prior year fund balance and expenditures for CRA projects, PW 2402 Downtown Mixed Use Development, uh, for $456,438, CR 2401, CRA, CRA alleyway improvements of $155,376, and CR 2402 Centennial Park renovations for $501,580. This is the Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, and this was previously approved by the CRA Board. Uh, staff recommendation is approval of resolution 2025-057R, and city council requested action is also approval. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And would anyone in the audience like to speak on the side? And can I get a motion from council?
Motion approved.
Motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Madam Clerk, please read item number two into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-04, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus 1,378 acres identified as Edgewater West, located east of Cherokee Road, north of Kissimmee Park Road, south of Clay Whaley Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter 171044 Florida statutes.
I'm going to call in the city attorney real quick on this.
Well, I just want to make sure we read item C from the consent agenda and the other two items. And then council, when, when you vote on these items, you'll need to vote on the item, the consent agenda item first, which is the annexation agreement.
Public hearing and transmitted for ordinance number 2025-05, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a future land use designation of plus minus, oh, sorry, mixed use for approximately plus minus 1,378 acres identified as Edgewater West, located east of Cherokee Road, northwest of Kissimmee Park Road, south of Clay Whaley Road, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effect, severability copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-06, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map, map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of plus minus 1,378 acres identified as Edgewater West from MXD, Mixed Use County zoning designation, to mix, mixed-use city zoning designation with a mixed-use future land use designation, located east of Cherokee Road, northwest of Kissimmee Park Road, south of Clay Whaley Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, following the planning recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date. Resolution number 2025-061R, a resolution of the city council, the city of St. Cloud, Florida, approving an annexation agreement between the city of St. Cloud, EW Property Holdings LLC, and W1 Property Holdings LLC for development known as Edgewater West, for approximately plus minus 1,378.5 acres, generally located north of Kissimmee Park Road, east of Cherokee Road, and west of the Florida Turnpike, describing the body of this resolution, authorizing the major, mayor to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. The cases before you tonight are for the Annexation Comp Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for the project known as Edgewater West. This request meets both the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing future land use is commercial with a mixed-use county zoning, oh, that's incorrect, I'm sorry. The existing future land use is mixed use with a mixed-use county zoning designation. The, uh, proposed future land use is mixed use with a mixed-use zoning as well. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the subject property shown in green there. And the pink color is the county's jurisdiction, and the yellow color is the city limits. And you can see that this property abuts the city limits along the western property boundary. Here's a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the surrounding current city and county land, land use designations. Here's a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the surrounding current county and city zoning classifications for context. Okay. Honor before March 25th, 2025, staff recommended approval. Planning Commission also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that city council approve ordinance number 2025-04 and 2025-06. The request for ordinance number 2025-05 is to, um, approve it to be transmitted to the Florida Department of Commerce for interagency review. And at this time, staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is also present.
All right, thank you, Melissa.
And Ms. Mayor, could I just supplement real quick? So item C is an annexation agreement, which, as you know, this project has been, has been, had some preliminary work done in the county. They've been through a certain amount of approvals. That annexation agreement allows for the project to come in and for, uh, the approvals that they get into the county to basically travel with the project when it comes into the city and, and, uh, uh, they would be applicable as entitlements for the project.
I, I was looking down. I was reading something else. Did we read item C into the record?
Yes, we did. We did. Thanks.
Was that the question you would ask Dan as well?
Yes.
I was reading.
In, at your seats is a, is a basically a, a slip page for section three to that agreement, which is resolution two, is being approved by resolution 2025-061. There's some minor changes that were included in there. So when you consider that item, we'd ask that you approve it with the changes that are on the one page in front of you. And essentially, these are related to, uh, the, the approvals in the county that will carry over into the. into the city. And I think, I don't know if Melissa mentioned it, but essentially what you're, because this, the comprehensive plan portion is a transmittal, you're approving the zoning and it's basically conditioned upon the, at the transmittal of the CPA and the final approval of that at a later date. Did you say that, Melissa? Okay.
Melissa, real quick, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We spoke earlier today about the, any commercial changes and all, is that included in this?
It is not included in there, but the applicant is here and available for questions. We did speak earlier with the city attorney. We talked about how we could possibly allow staff to administratively approve any changes to consider commercial in that development as a condition of the zoning map amendment. So, we are prepared to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Urban, did you have a question on Melissa?
That was going to be my question. I was concerned with the lack of commercial within this, and I had a conversation with Melissa and our city manager, and they had mentioned if we allow it to have administrative staff approval, they could add more commercial without having to come back to the city council. So I was going to recommend adding that to this agreement.
And that's what they're going to be asking for as well, to add it to this tonight?
The applicant's are here, so yes, if they are amenable to that condition, staff does recommend that we add that condition.
Boy, the applicant would like to speak on this item.
Hi, Kevin Kramer with BTI Partners, 4798 New Broad Street, Orlando, 32814. Can you say that condition again? I was walking up. I want to make sure I heard it clearly.
Well, the discussion we had earlier, at least that I did, it sounds like you had a similar one.
Yeah.
You were agreeable to change some of the residential into commercial, but you didn't want to go through the whole process, except for just through staff and through the city manager approval. Is that correct? Did I read that?
My, yeah, that the concept plan could be revised and approved by staff instead of the city council.
Yeah, that's terrific. Yeah, as you know, these, the concept plan and the PSS were approved in the county. And the funny thing is, the original concept plan, we had had some commercial in there. And it was removed, the county removed it because they had concerns it didn't comply with the comp plan. So they had it removed out of there. I mean, it was fine. It wasn't worth a comp plan amendment to do that. So, we just went with the recommendation. The plan got approved. It's now being brought in with that in there. So, yeah, we will, we are talking to some commercial people. They've approached us that they've had some interest in going in there. So, you know, with a condition that that can be done at staff level, you know, we can open those conversations back up with those folks.
Yes, sir. How many homes is this entitled for?
I don't know right off the top of my head, but I'm going to say it's three, go ahead, 3,600. I was going to guess.
You would not hurt my feelings if you did less homes and more commercial.
Okay.
I encourage commercial, like really, we need employment centers.
Sure.
That's the, we need jobs around here, and if we don't have the land, we don't set aside the land for that, they'll never come here. So.
Understood.
Everybody be working out of their homes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. You're good. All right, can we get a motion? I'm sorry, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Item 2, 3, 4, and I think that was D?
C.
C.
My name is Dennis Beavis. I own the property at 2900 Carriage Court, which would be right edge with what the proposal is. I just want to know, how is that going to affect, if you guys are next to the city, how's that going to affect us there? Because we right now are under county rules.
I'm sorry, affect you in what capacity?
So if this property gets annexed to the city, I'm on the, right on the edge of it, right? I'm the last property with them. So how's it going to affect us there?
Okay, I don't have a map in front of me, and that's why, I'm sorry. I know where Carriage Court is.
Yeah, I'm the very last property on the right-hand side.
Yeah, down Clay Whaley Road, there's wagon and, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm the very last dirt road.
Yeah, city manager.
Can I get the address?
2900?
Yeah.
Carriage Court?
100 Carriage. I'm just trying to determine if he's going to be in an enclave or if he's just adjacent and will stay, you know, if he would just stay.
So that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
What would affect you if they're going to be annexed in or not?
So essentially, what the city manager's pointing, if he's not part of, if this property's not part of an enclave, then it would essentially be a voluntary annexation by him whenever he wanted to, and the city wouldn't be able to do it. If he is, however, in an enclave pursuant to the agreement that the city has with the county, he could be annexed in at a future date.
Yeah, if everyone wants to go commercial there, you know, more than welcome to do that.
No, because the thing is, I own a construction company.
Yes, sir.
We keep industrial equipment in that property, which has, it's allowed as of today. If the city takes over, is those rules are going to change? Am I going to be affected on my property, having my equipment there? Because now we have a different set of rules.
I totally understand that. Yep. And I think the staff can give you in writing what the change would be or what the, that your rights would transfer over in some way, right? You can't, there's compatible use, right?
He's not being annexed. So his rights will not change tonight at all because he's not being annexed.
And that's why I'm here.
I see where he's at, but unfortunately, the map in the staff report does not show the current city limits, so I can't tell if he's in an enclave or not. I'm not familiar enough with the area. But regardless, his, this application this evening is not going to annex you, so your rights will continue in Osceola County as you currently are.
Yeah. And if that changed, you know, there'd be discussion about that, and you'd be notified or, you know, how that, do y'all have, do they have city and water, water and sewer down there now?
No.
You're all well.
Well.
Okay. Okay.
That's all we got.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Stay involved and stay up to speed as things go on. I mean, this may take some time down the road until we talk about your property, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, with that, can we get a motion for item 2, 3, 4, and C?
Well, we do C first with the amendments as we presented to you, and then we can go through 2, 3, and 4.
Motion to approve item C with the amendments, including the administrative approval for any commercial additions.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Well, that's fine.
Is that?
We want to, we want to put that in the zoning piece when we get to that, so we'll take it here too, as long as we get in the zoning piece.
We have a motion on the table.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Madam Clerk, please read the next item into the record.
Well, she was already read, so we just need a motion on, we're on item two on public hearings now.
We do them individual?
Yes.
And can we get a motion for item number two?
Which is the annexation.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
And this is, can we get a motion for item number three?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
And can I get a motion for item number four?
Motion to approve with the amendment to allow administrative approval of any commercial additions to the plan.
All right, we have the motion with the amendments from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
And Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-07, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a future land use designation of medium density residential to approximately plus minus 1.15 acres, identifies McKay Street, located east of Brown Chapel Road, north of 10th Street, south of 5th Street, west of McKay Street, providing the amending official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-08, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 1.5 acres identified as McKay Street, from NB Neighborhood Business zoning designation to R3 multifamily dwelling zoning designation with a medium density residential future land use designation located east of Brown Chapel Road, north of 10th Street, south of 5th Street, and west of McKay Street, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map following the planning recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. These cases before you tonight are for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for the project known as McKay Street. The existing future land use is commercial with the Neighborhood Business zoning classification. The request is for a medium density residential land use, which will allow between four and 10 dwelling units per acre and an R3 zoning for multifamily dwelling. And through our analysis, staff found that this request is incompatible with the adjacent commercial developments, but will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. This subject parcel was voluntarily annexed into the city through the Small Enclaves Interlocal Agreement with Osceola County through Resolution Number 2014-196R. And in that resolution, it indicated that the county land use was low density residential when it was annexed. However, the county zoning was commercial restricted, and that was approved on December 11 of 2014. Here is a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the current future land use designation of commercial. Here's a graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the current Neighborhood Business zoning classification for context. On our before, March 25, 2025, staff recommended denial of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment based on findings number 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 12, 15, and 16 of the Land Development Code, and I will read those into the record. Number one, the proposed change is contrary to the established land use pattern. Number two, the proposed change would create an isolated district unrelated to the adjacent and nearby districts. Number four, existing district boundaries are illogically drawn in relation to existing conditions on the property proposed for change. Number five, the proposed change would be contrary to the land use plan and would have an adverse effect on the comprehensive plan. Number six, change or changing conditions make the passage of the proposed amendment necessary. Number seven, the proposed change will adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood. Twelve, the proposed change will be a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent, sorry, of adjacent property in accordance with existing regulations. Fifteen, whether the change suggested is out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city. Sixteen, it is impossible to find other adequate sites in the city for the proposed use in districts already zoned for such use. And that was the recommendation for the denial of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. We also recommended denial of the zoning map amendment based on findings 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, 11, 12, 15, and 16 of the Land Development Code. I will not read those into the record unless the city attorney requires me to, to save you guys from having to hear them again. So, when this item went to Planning Commission on April 15, 2025, Planning Commission also recommended denial based on the same findings as presented by staff. Likewise, it is requested that council deny ordinance number 2025-07 and 2025-08 based on the findings as stated by staff, and the applicant is present. I saw him earlier.
I see him.
Okay, and staff is available for questions.
Yeah, applicant, would you like to speak on this?
All right. Good evening, Jeremy Kibler, KDA Engineering, 2017, 13th Street, St. Cloud, Florida, 34769. So, probably won't get to everything, but I'm, we'll follow up with any questions. Let me start by just noting that it is correctly stated, the property, in this case, it was not executed by the property owner at the time, so it was involuntarily annexed per the interlocal agreement in 2014. It is a correct statement that the property at the time had a county future land use designation of low density residential. The zoning district was in conflict with that. There was not a structure constructed on the property. When the property was annexed in, it should have been given a medium, a city medium density residential future land use designation, and that's because of the difference of the density, dwelling units density given between the city and the county. So basically, that was in conflict at the time, should not ever have really been given a commercial future land use or a Neighborhood Business zoning designation. I will also note, currently, with the current city's future land use designation of commercial and the zoning district designation of neighborhood business, the property is in violation of the city's comprehensive plan policy 2.1.5. It states neighborhood commercial areas and uses that generate high traffic loads must, must be located adjacent to collector or arterial roadways. McKay Street is neither one of those. I can say that for certain, would be classified or designated as a minor street or local Just to give you some reference, the property, the closest southeast corner of the property, to 10th Street, 530 feet, almost two football fields. The same, same corner, southeast corner, 890 feet away from US 192. Those are your, those are your closest potential, 192 definitely arterial collector roadway, 10th Street, potentially. Closest to the northeast corner, 970 feet to 5th Street. Those are your closest interconnecting roadways. So this is extremely distant from anything that would be considered a collector or arterial roadway. Just want to put that on the record. Additionally, in support of the request, I would state, City of St. Cloud Comprehensive Plan Policy H1.1.8. The city shall encourage infill residential development where public services and infrastructure currently exist. This is your prototypical infill residential development. Public services and infrastructure do currently exist or are in place now. Moving on, I would state that, you know, the subject parcel should never have been designated as commercial. If there's not a structure on the property and you have a conflicting zoning district, that should have been corrected at that time, and it wasn't corrected. It was actually going the other way, input and direct violation with the comprehensive plan at the time. What we would ask is that, consider the request, consider that the request does bring uniformity to the existing future land use designations of the surrounding properties that are in place, and I just want to put this back up for the council to look at. So if you look, it would bring uniformity to what's there. All of the yellow is medium density residential, and we're simply asking that that particular parcel be converted to medium density residential. I won't go one by one, but I will say this respectfully, respectfully, the staff's responses to the 16 findings are riddled with contradictions. I'll give you one. I'll give you one example. So if I go, I got a lot of documents here. Hang on a second. So if I go to the response provided for number 12, staff indicates this proposed change will hinder the development of adjacent properties to the north. We, we presented to staff as part of the application that the re, part of the reason for this request is that we're actually, we already, under the same ownership contiguous to this property, we would combine this property to that property, which is literally to the north. So it doesn't hinder the development, actually facilitates the development of that property. That's just one example. I'm happy to go through any others that council may want to look at or consider, but we respectfully request that you consider the current comprehensive plan, the characteristic of the neighborhood, the consistency of the surrounding future land use and zoning district designations, and respectfully request your approval here tonight. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kibler.
Thank you.
I'm familiar with the site. That, that, in the history of that, in, in 1990, the Birchfield Chevrolet dealership used to be where that collision center is. And when they sold that off, this 1.15 acres continued to stay in the Birchfield family. And that's why it was, Melissa, you said that the zoning was commercial in the county, correct?
Yes, sir. It was commercial in the county.
Yeah. And, and so that's why it was commercial, because it was part of the Highway 192 and 10th Street, not because of its location on McKay. I'm very familiar with it, Dan. You know, I was a prior owner of that in 2014 when it was annexed in, and I 100% disagreed with that zoning back then, and I hadn't wanted to go towards the, what they're looking for now. So that's, I am familiar with that area.
Sure.
So I, I can confirm that Mr. Kibler is correct when he says that in the county, when it was zoned, I'm sorry, with, with the land use of low density residential, with it having a conflicting zoning. Typically, the zoning follows the land use, but our table of classified lands in our land development code is based on zoning, not on land use. So had they developed in the county, they would have been required to bring the zoning in compliance with the land use, not the opposite. But regarding his comments of it being in conflict with our comp plan, I disagree because it's not, the comp plan has not looked at on a parcel by parcel level. It's looked at as the area as a whole. So if you aggregate it with the parcels to the south, it, it is, it is off of a, I think it said it had to be off of a collector or arterial roadway. So whatever council's will is, we are, we are happy to oblige.
You know, I understand. I, I'm definitely in favor of keeping as much commercial in our city as possible. But when it comes to this one, the marketability of that as a commercial site, because I remember when it was given that neighborhood business designation, that really is the bottom of the barrel. It's a junky zoning. I mean, it really, it really doesn't offer much.
Very respected.
No offense to the zoning, I guess.
I'll speak on their behalf.
Whoever came. And that's just my views. I look at, you know, the surrounding areas where it's already medium density, and I know a number of them are already, they do have the zoning of R3. And your, your client, Mr. Kibler, he's got multiple parcels there, if I'm not mistaken. Four, three, four parcels, right? And I can tell you, in the future, I would love to see high density in that area, you know, from the mobile home park over to the shopping centers, because that's where I believe high density belongs, not on the outskirts of town where there's not retail. I think we need to have it closer to the bus stops and the retail and, and the post office and all of that. So that's where, why I, you know, I'm obviously in favor of, of an R3 zoning and possibly in the future, an R4 if collectively, you know, those, those properties were, were put together. So that's just my comments on that. Council, do you have any comments on, on this item? All right. And do we have any comments from the, anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? All right, can we get a motion? No motion? All right, go ahead and make a motion to approve this item. And can we get a second?
You know, I, I spoke to the applicant earlier today and, and, and I was, I'm always hesitant to change a, a commercial zoning to residential, but learning a little bit more about the history tonight and, and, and this area, I'll, I'll go ahead and second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Nay.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2.
And can we have a motion for item number six? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item number six. Can we get a second?
Second?
We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Nay.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-2.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-14. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a future land use designation of MDR, medium density residential, to approximately plus minus 17.18 acres identified as East Park PUD, located north of East 10th Street, south of Lake Runnymede, providing for amending of the future, future land use map, planning, map of the comprehensive plan, following the Planning Commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability, copies on file and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-15. An ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD, planned unit development approximately for approximately plus minus 17.18 acres identified as East Park PUD, located north of East 10th Street, south of Lake Runnymede, providing for entering the designation official zoning map, providing of approval of the preliminary master plan, following the planning recommendations, proof of publication, severability and effective date.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. These cases before you tonight are for the comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for the PUD and preliminary master plan for the project known as Eastside Park PUD. The existing county future land use is low density residential with an agricultural county zoning. The requested city land use is medium density residential, and the requested zoning designation is PUD or Planned Unit Development. The applicant is proposing 94 duplex style, single family dwelling units, and this request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the future land use map. And this one is for the zoning map. Here's a graphic representation of the location and layout of the preliminary master plan. There will be a presentation later by the applicant that will dive more into the details of this development, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. But for the record, the enhancements that the applicant is offering in order to get a planned unit development approved are the following. They are proposing to save all of the wetlands without any impact. They are going to utilize Florida-friendly landscaping and enhanced buffers with mature vegetation at planning. The homes in the community are placed an average of 299.7 feet from the high water line of Lake Runnymede. The density is below the maximum allowed for the medium density land use. They will have an enhanced entrance landscaped, including a split rail fence along 10th Street. They are going to provide a non-monotony, non-monotony clause within the ordinance, and that basically just means that they will have elevations that alternate so that you don't have two of the same house next to each other or across the street from each other. They are going to have looped connected internal drive aisles for ease of emergency access. They are providing pedestrian and bicycle friendly amenities throughout the site to provide residents with convenient access to local downtown businesses. They are proposing to connect and pay the cost for the sidewalk in front of the FDOT Pond property, and they are also exceeding the minimum open space requirements. They are providing enhanced architectural standards, and they will be wrapping the architectural style of the front of the home around all four sides of their products, and that includes the first and second floors. They are proposing to have rear-loaded garage homes with private roads with no garages fronting 10th Street. They will exceed the minimum parking standards, and they will provide the additional enhanced amenities that include a quarter mile walking trail with 15 benches, pocket parks, a dog park, exercise station, most importantly, a pickleball court, and connected sidewalks to the nearby trail systems. That was a joke about the pickleball. So staff recommended approval. I just want to talk about the conditions a little bit. We are recommending approval with conditions. So at the time that this project went to Planning Commission, only the first two conditions of approval were included in the staff report, and then after more negotiations with the applicant, we added the second two. So I'll read them into the record because staff is recommending approval with these conditions. That the final master plan show connected looped drive aisles. The applicant shall work with the city and FDOT for the extension of the sidewalk along East 10th Street between the FDOT Pond and Oak Tree Point Villas. The final master plan will show the walkways to the front door. The final master plan shall show elevations wrapping around the architectural standards on all sides of the buildings. And so Planning Commission did recommend approval for the first two conditions, and then after Planning Commission, we added the second two. So staff is requesting that council approve ordinance number 2025-14 and ordinance number 2025-15 with the conditions as stated by staff. And I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also present, and they have a presentation prepared for you.
All right, would the applicant like to speak on this?
Good evening, Pearson Sanchez with Luxor Development, 4700 Millennium Boulevard, Orlando, Florida. Thank you. Very awesome. Thank you. This is the Eastside Park development. This is, consists of 94 duplex lots or units. And let me get to the next slide here. There you go. So we have worked closely with city staff since January of 2023 to design and create a PUD that would create an opportunity for a residential community that greatly exceeds city standards like Eastside Park. We are also happy to mention that we have received a recommendation of approval by the DRC and Planning Commission for our proposed application. Less density, we have less density than required by the city or county's future land use. Prior to the annexation into the city of St. Cloud, the property was originally in Osceola County with a future land use of LER, which allows up to eight dwelling units per acre, which would have allowed for 137 units. Under the city's MDR FLU, that would be about 171 units because that's a gross density and not a net. Eastside Park's density is six and a half dwelling units an acre with a unit count of 94 units. Site is located north of East 10th Street and just directly above the northern end of Old Hickory Tree Road. Here's a continuation of the site location near some more major roads in city. Now, this is the landscaping, the entrance from the view on East 10th Street. This illustrated view is approximately 75 feet from the site. We have a variation of mature landscaping to maintain an organic appearance. And we have live oak trees, Japanese, Japanese blueberry trees and split rail fencing. Like Melissa had mentioned earlier, the landscaping in this community will be mature when it's installed, so you're not going to have like your saplings from Home Depot that are like a stick. We have the next slide here. This is another view from East 10th Street. This is just along the border of East 10th Street, so that's what it would look like about 60 feet from the site. Same thing there with the mature landscaping. And then there is the landscaping planting schedule. You got about 100, over, I believe, 250 trees and 870 shrubs total consisting of six various types. This is the landscaping view from Oak Tree Point. We have Florida-friendly landscape buffers that we're going to be providing along the eastern boundary of the site with mature landscaping installed to maintain an organic character. The illustrated view above is approximately 400 feet from the site overlooking the FDOT's pond, so this would be in the backyard of the lots in Oak Tree Point. We have enhanced landscaping. We've met with the neighboring Oak Tree Point community, which is also a duplex development, and our project is designed to align seamlessly with this character and standards. We are providing a landscape buffer between our community and theirs, which includes 73 live oak trees standing at 12 feet tall, 53 eagles and holly trees or six to eight feet tall, over 430 total shrubs, which will sit between trees for a natural green buffer. Here's another landscaping view from the western boundary. We got more Florida-friendly landscape buffers that are going to be provided along that buffer, and this view is approximately 60 feet from the site. Unlike Oak Tree Point, every home in Eastside Park features a rear-loaded garage instead of a front-loaded garage. On the southernmost section of the community that faces along East 10th Street, none of those, none of those elevations, the garages will face 10th Street, they will all be facing the front of the home. We have enhanced architectural standards by material and wrapping the facade, including the side elevations of the homes on the main road. There's also a white split rail fence with enhanced mature landscaping along the 10th Street frontage, additional landscaping provided for the entrance features as well. Here's a neighborhood streetscape of the community entrance. These plants are to the landscape plan as is, and that, we have this rendering here with the alternating elevations. We have H, G, and J, and then on the side of the units, you can see that we have some shutters on the sides of the doors, shutters on the top windows. We even have them on top of the front door, or sorry, not the front doors, the top windows in the front elevation. And we also have siding up top and what is it, rock going around the base of the unit. And this is a layout of the alternating elevations in the community, so you don't see a bunch of, you know, gray homes in one row. We have the elevations alternating throughout to where it's like mixed. And there's your legend there. And yes, the duplexes cannot be repeated within the same block. Architectural standards, all homes in Eastside Park will feature rear-loaded garages. We are exceeding the minimum requirements with enhanced architectural standards by providing a requirement for various exterior materials and multiple elevations as shown in the following slides. This is elevation G. This is the layout and color for this. We actually have shutters above the rear garages as well on those back windows, and they are included on the side elevation as well for both sides. The same happens here with H. And the same happens with elevation J. Parks and amenities, we have nearly 30,000 square feet for a dog park. There's five pocket parks, quarter mile natural walking trail, eight exercise stations, 15 outdoor benches, a pickleball court, a playground, a drinking water station, multiple bicycle parking areas throughout the site to provide residents convenient access to local and downtown businesses. We have included parking spaces along the street to provide additional parking We have included parking spaces along the street to provide additional parking for guests and residents. We are proposing 434 spaces and 4.72 acres of open space for this project, exceeding the required amounts of 423 parking spaces and 2.9 acres of open space. The amount of open space on this project is about 2.7 times the size of Veterans Park here on 13th. Here's the layout of the amenity and recreation plan, just kind of showing all the amenities laid out throughout this community. Here is the plant continued. We got zoomed in. We did want to point out that the lift station won't just be bare wire fenced there. It's going to have shrubbery around it masking it. And then we have those pocket parks there as well with the benches and the bicycle parking. The sidewalks here are five feet sidewalks and they connect all the way out to East 10th Street and to the natural walking trail located on the northernmost section of the site. Along with the sidewalks, we will be paying and connecting the sidewalk from Oak Tree Point Villas to East Side Park through the section of the FDOT ponds or the FDOT's parcel in front of their pond. Yes, Oak Tree Point's residents expressed their desire and concern that on East 10th Street that there would be a gap between the sidewalk of East Side Park and the existing sidewalks to the east. The gap is the frontage of FDOT's retention pond, which is between our project and the Oak Tree Point community. We have agreed to connect the sidewalks, allowing a continued walking path, which once again, we will be paying for. I skipped one there. Distances from high water line, the homes in the community are placed an average of 299.7 feet from the high water line of Lake Runnymede. There is an FDOT pond, which creates space of approximately 404.7 feet between Oak Tree Point and this project. The project retention pond was placed on the northeast of the property to create additional distance between the adjacent Oak Tree Point. Enhanced community safety, the hammerheads, the hammer, sorry, the hammerheads at the end of the alleyways are proposed to be connected and will be looping for a safer access instead. This is an exhibit of the distances from the high water line. Like we said, there is an average of 299.7 feet, but the lowest being 270.4 feet from the high water line. Wetland preservation area, all the wetland on this project is preserved. There is no impact to the wetlands and the wetland buffers provided would allow the future residents to enjoy a natural buffer. In summation, the project exceeds minimum standards by utilizing Florida friendly landscape and enhanced buffers. Enhanced landscaping, including the split rail fencing, exceeds minimum open space standards by providing 4.72 acres of open space. Sorry, provides for enhanced architectural standards for the material and the facades of the homes, rear loaded and garage homes with private road access. And we're exceeding the minimum standards for parking with 434 parking spaces, including the street parking. Loop connected internal drive aisles for ease of emergency access without the need for hammerheads or turnarounds. Provides pedestrian and bicycle friendly amenities throughout the site to provide residents with convenient access to local and downtown businesses. The project is saving all the wetlands without any impact. Florida friendly mature landscaping entrance, lower density than the FLU under the city or the county allows. We are proposing to connect and pay for the cost of connecting the offsite sidewalk in front of the FDOT pond to give nearby communities and residents access to that sidewalk area. We got more amenities with the quarter mile walking trail, the pocket parks, dog park, the exercise stations, the pickleball court, and once again sidewalks and the trails, which will be available to the public as well. Went too far there. Is there any questions?
Yes, actually, can we go back to the showing where the sidewalk is going to be in front of the DOT and in front of your subdivision?
Yes. This exhibit?
Yes, so is that sidewalk going to be all the way back like Oak Tree is, like their sidewalk off the road? Cause I know it kind of comes up closer to the road where that ditch is that splits the DOT plus is that Oak Tree subdivision, Oak Tree Point? What's the other duplex one?
Yeah, it's Oak Tree Point. Yeah, to, yes, to the.
Oak Tree Point, then you have a ditch. Not a big ditch, but then you've got the pond.
Yes.
But where that ditch is, that's where the sidewalk comes up close to the road. But at Oak Tree Point, it goes up closer to Oak Tree Point. So where's that sidewalk going to run in front of the DOT and the subdivision?
Yeah, so right there where it's in the yellow where it's highlighted.
Right, but I'm not seeing Oak Tree Point. Do you have?
Uh, let me see if I can go back here and get that in there.
Melissa, do you know what I'm referring to? Okay.
Trying to find exhibit with it in there. So let me just go to this one. So where that 30 foot platted right of way not opened is along that line there is where Oak Tree Point starts. That would, I believe, pass that parcel to the east would be their, um, their landscape buffer.
So your sidewalk will be north of the ditch along 10th Street?
Yes.
Does that have to say the drainage ditch?
Yes.
Okay. It'll be in line with Oak Tree Point? Which would be in line with Ashley Oaks all the way.
Yeah, there is a ditch there and there, um, there is a sidewalk that goes over already on the ditch.
Well, it comes out where the ditch is from Oak Tree, it come, it goes towards the road. I'm trying to keep sidewalk off the road. I just want to ensure that it's not going to be where the ditch is and you've got the, the the fence to keep people from going into the ditch.
We have our engineer Bruce Taylor available.
All right, thank you, Bruce. Name and address.
Yes, good evening, Bruce Taylor, 131 East 13th Street, B Taylor and Associates. So the, I know what you're talking about. The sidewalk actually goes at about a 45 degree angle. And then we, we're going to meet up with that, but I think what we don't have shown there, but it's going to have to be a pipe system. We're going to have to pipe the 10th Street system in order to get the clearance that's going to be required for that sidewalk to be constructed.
Yeah, I think what I'm asking is it, is the sidewalk, as it stands right now, you're connecting to the sidewalk on the other side, the, the east side of the DOT?
Correct.
Property.
Correct.
So you're going to take it from there and go into the DOT property more?
Well.
Not just run it straight.
What we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to probably have to pipe that. Just from what's shown there, we had, we don't have a lot of room behind where that ditch is to the, to the front property line of the DOT pond. So in order to make more usable area, we're going to have to pipe that, at least that stretch in front of the DOT.
That ditch. But where's the sidewalk going to go? That's really my concern.
Well, going on top of the pipe. I mean, wherever the pipe, the pipe's going to be underground, we're going to have more usable area.
You're right, but where the sidewalk is in front of Oak Tree and Ashley Oaks all the way over to, or yeah, Ashley Oaks, all the way to Narcousie Road. Is that where you're going to be in line with that?
Right, where the, the plan should show where it ties in. Like I said, it comes in at a 45 degree angle, but it actually goes up to the north and then it runs along their right of way line, which is actually a little further north.
Melissa, do we have a plan showing it connecting? And showing Oak Tree is where their sidewalk is as well?
I think I see what you're saying.
Cause I'm not seeing it off the page here.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking at the aerial and
You know what I mean?
The, that sidewalk is substantially farther north and I, and I.
Which is the way Ashley Oaks is all the way from.
Correct, but it does come down at a 45. And it work, where that ties in, it's going to tie into ours, which is going to be about, right about where that is.
Well, it comes up just because of the ditch.
Yeah, the, the problem, the problem that we're having there is DOT, they don't have, they're, we're giving 14 and a half feet of right of way. The DOT, their right of way is much, is going to be much further south than we're at. So we're, we're going to have a limited area to construct the sidewalk. Like I said, we're going to go ahead and.
My, my question is, is it going to be in line with what's already there in front of Oak Tree?
We're going to tie into where, where it jogs down at 45. Yes, sir.
Which is right against 10th Street, which is, I think, what you're asking. You're wanting it closer to the, to the north.
Because one day 10th Street is going to need to be widened.
Right.
It's inevitable.
That's correct.
You're not putting the sidewalk where it's currently, where you're connecting it up to. You're going to, you're going to go in all the way into the property, just like Oak Tree is.
I believe so. We're, we're going to, we're going to put it where we can, we're not going to, we're not going to be affecting the DOT property.
I'm going to go ahead and, uh, council member Gilbert.
Your light's on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Maybe I spun in circles on my own questions.
We all have our opportunities. East and west, both 10th Street and Lake Shore are reliever lanes for 13th Street. And that's, people come down, they come down 10th Street or they come down Lake Shore, going east to west to Narcousie from the Turnpike, Brown's Chapel, places like that. You're looking at 94 houses, 180 cars, minimum, you've got 400 and some parking spots. What enhancement are we looking at 10th Street? Because that's a two lane road. And if you get people turning left or right, that's going to back up traffic all the way to the, uh, to the cemetery or beyond, when somebody's trying to turn, I've, I've gone down that road numerous times. I just, there's no left turn lanes being built, there's no right merge. So I just don't know how 10th Street is going to handle that much more traffic. That's just mine. And then some of these divisions that we have subdivisions or, or these places have enhancements to our existing roads to do that. But I didn't hear anything that there'll be a left turn lane incorporated on the expense or there'll be passing lanes or stuff like that. Those are the things that concern me a little bit. Great place, great piece of property. I just don't know how much more 10th Street can handle on just being a single 30 mile an hour, 25 mile an hour each way. And I yield back to whoever the council is here, I just know that that's going to be an issue, if not today, in the future.
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Oh, yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, can I respond? So when we started this project, I know that we do have a traffic study that was put together for, um, for this one specifically. But I do know that the city is working on a 10th Street traffic, traffic analysis that is supposed to be coming, you know, coming up in the next year or two. I mean, if we, if we do need to have some additional turn lanes, then we'll go ahead. I mean, at this point, it's a little premature, but I do know that we do have a traffic study put together. And if we need to add the turn lanes, we can add them. Like I said, I do know that the city is working on a traffic analysis for the 10th Street area there.
All right, I'm going to let City Manager comment first.
Just need to clarify to the council, we lost the grant for that. That was part of the federal pause that has been done.
So yes, there's no traffic study right now on 10th Street. Uh, Deputy Mayor.
So I just, I've looked at this project and there's several different lenses. And all of the items that, that you addressed in the presentation, I feel like you've taken everything that I've ever mentioned in the last two years to one plan as far as recreation, landscaping, the architectural design standards, all of those things. Even the, the distance to, to, to Lake Runnymede and all of that. My biggest concern was the, the, the 10th Street roadway. We did have the, the studies and stuff, I believe it was through Metro Plan or, or whatnot, that was stopped at the federal level, but you know, we'll eventually get there. Another way to, to, to look at this, I mean, you guys, the other way to look at this is it's going to serve. People are going to come down 192 Hickory and then, and then, and then come in. Is it's also providing, uh, you know, once 10th Street does get done from the initial design concepts that I've seen, it's going to provide direct access to downtown to serve the, to serve the downtown businesses through economic development, spending money, bicycle, you know, they're coming down downtown, they come throughout the grid, are ready. I'm not making an excuse for it is, it is going to put traffic on the road. When a traffic study comes back after the approval, right? So once you get the site development, you're, you have to do a traffic study anyways. And if it indicates that a turn lane needs to be put in, then you have no other choice but put turn lane in.
That's correct. And we are, like I said earlier, we are giving 14 and a half feet of future right of way, so.
And then we have that right away that runs all the way, the majority down 10th Street, I would imagine, to correct, to, to be able to do the initial concept from what I was looking at from a long, it was a long time ago.
I, I know it's a constrained roadway. I, I, I don't know how much is available on, on the north side of the road.
Right.
Our engineers might be able to answer that. I know Cameron's here if you want an answer like that.
No, that's okay. Those are my comments for now.
Are you sure Cameron wants to talk? Give me a reason.
Well, I guess, well, I can respond to, I do know that our design, we've been going through like months and months of redesign on this. But everything is pedestrian and, uh, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to have it accessible to everybody around the area and have more pedestrian access. So that should alleviate, I mean, I know you're going to have your typical traffic pattern, but a lot of the people are going to be using the sidewalks onsite and going offsite and, you know, using a lot more foot traffic than vehicle traffic. That's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to strive for.
All right, Councilmember Paul.
Yes, um, to the applicant, um, can he confirm that these townhomes would be individually owned and by Fee Simple?
Can you get up to the podium, please? Yes, sir.
Yes, these, these duplexes are Fee Simple. They are not built for rent community.
Okay, Melissa, do we have DOT, do we have Oak Tree to show on the map as well? I am concerned about the sidewalk. That's a.
Would you, would you like for me to just pull it up on like the property appraisers aerial? Because I could not find any maps in our presentation that show.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Paul. Your light's on, you have something else?
I, I think I can also help if you're looking at, at, I don't know if it was this, yeah, this map, you, you kind of, you see the lighter line. When you look at the property appraisers office, just on the pond property, you, you, you see what looks like a fence. That, that appears to line up with the oak subdivisions sidewalk. You can see the fence there. I've been staring.
Yes, the, the chain link fence does, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I think on the other map, you could, you could see that chain link fence to, to, to see the difference.
All right, so Bruce, is that fence, is that sidewalk going to go right along that fence line where DOT has that fence, that chain link fence? Melissa, can you move it back over just a little bit more?
I guess you can, yeah, you can see we're at 45 is right there. So yeah, there you go. So what, we're putting the sidewalk right at the edge of the DOT property slash right of way line. And we're going to be.
Where is that at? Can you show me where your finger pinned on the map, please? You're going to put the sidewalk all the way up against the road? Whose finger? Oh, it's Tisha's finger. Like whose finger is that?
So we're going to take that and then we're going to we're going to, we're going to join up to that point and then we're going to go back up wherever the right of way line is over here. It's going to come up to wherever the right of way is and then run there in the, in the right of way. That's why I was saying we're going to need, we're going to need to pipe that ditch.
Yes, sir, I, can you show me with your pin? It'd be a lot easier than your finger. Where that, make maybe show it with your pin where that sidewalk is going to be.
Here's the existing sidewalk right here. Wherever the, wherever the right of way line is, we're going to take it right up to the edge. Because we don't, we don't have the authority to put the sidewalk in the DOT property. So we're going to put it right along the property line slash right of way line along there.
So you're not going to be in there?
No, so we're not going to be in the DOT property. We're going to, we're going to put the sidewalk in the right of way line.
Okay, is there any reason why we didn't match it up with the, the rest of the subdivision since we're kind of connecting them all? And with the, the way 10th Street is right now, having a sidewalk that close, it does bother me. I understand for that, you know, 15 feet where that deep ditch is to kind of go around it, but I think that'll change in the future anyway.
I believe so. So this came, this came to us in the 11th hour and we, we agreed to installing the sidewalk to appease everybody so we could get the traffic, pedestrian traffic to go east to west. So wherever we need to put it, which typically you're going to put it right at the edge of the right of way line. And that's why I was saying we're going to need to close. And that's why I was saying we're gonna need to close that, that, that this, uh, ditch system with fire.
Okay, regardless of DOT, let's go to your property. I'm sorry, if we can move over and, and show me on the map where your sidewalk is gonna be. Because you have full control over that.
Our sidewalk is gonna be, again, at the edge of the right away line, property line.
All right, you keep going into the property. That's where it's kinda confusing me because I see the fence, the DOT fence. So you're, you're gonna. You're telling me you can't go up to DOT fence because it's their property, but on the property you represent, you do have the ability to do that.
So right, so do you see that? That's, that's where our sidewalk is going.
Yeah, and that's what bothers me. It, it's so close to 10th Street, that's a dangerous road. It's, uh, it's only gonna get busier. Is there any way we can push that sidewalk all the way to the, to, to line up with Oak Tree and with Ashley Oaks?
I mean, it's up to the owner, but I mean, we do have the 14 and a half foot right away dedication. We, we theoretically, we could construct it right there.
You have a five foot sidewalk that's running, uh, uh, that would line up with the chain link fence on the DOT property, which is, I think, what the mayor is asking, but I think you were having that as an internal sidewalk within your subdivision.
Yeah. I'm looking for the, the people walking along 10th Street. I don't want them walking two foot off the road. I mean, that, that's dangerous, which is why we didn't do the Rommel Road that way.
Well, we could, we could move that sidewalk up into here, but like she said, we have another sidewalk right here.
Well, then that's, but that's gotta be accessible to everybody else. Is that correct?
Which it is.
So that's, then that's the, gonna be the one that's gonna line up with the rest of them. That's what I would like to see. That's the one where everybody walking from Oak Tree or Ashley Oaks or all the way down 10th Street, they'll walk on that five foot sidewalk behind those units?
Right, because this, if you can see this, this sidewalk here, it comes out to, it comes out to the right away. So here's, here's your connection here.
Why, why are we doing two sidewalks then? What, what, I don't understand, which one's gonna link up with?
This, this sidewalk, sir, is for, this is, these, these are the front of the houses, so they have a sidewalk. Cause these are rear loading, there are rear loading duplexes.
Correct.
So these are the fronts of all the houses, which have a sidewalk in front.
Right. So why is there gonna be a second sidewalk about, I don't know, eight feet in front of it?
Well, typically, I think St. Cloud requires to have a sidewalk on the frontage of all new properties, key projects required.
If I could help.
City Manager.
With this, if I can, if I can help with a solution, I, I think if you would put a public easement on that northern five foot sidewalk, you could eliminate the second sidewalk and make the city council happy.
Push it back off the road.
It's fine with me.
It's dangerous, right? You know, 10th Street is gonna be widened, so it would, it would save a lot of taxpayer dollars not having to tear up a sidewalk for the taxpayers to build another sidewalk. I mean, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, and they can't do anything about the DOT property, but we could reach out to DOT and see if they would work with us on moving it north.
Yeah, uh, name and address for the record.
Shamaa Paradi, Luxe Development, 4700 Millina Boulevard in Orlando. We're fine with doing that. I mean, we were just trying to, you know, go with the guidance that the staff told us, so, and we're trying to respect both ways. So if we could do what you're suggesting, we're, we're okay with doing that.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I just, I couldn't tell from the maps.
If you can help us out with the DOT issue, uh, we're okay with, you know, just going straight through where the DOT, you know, uh, property line is as well, so.
And we'll, we'll, uh, uh, staff will reach out to DOT and see if there's any, anything that we can do to move the sidewalk up. I'm sure they'll work with us, they understand this stuff, they, they know we're not gonna wanna build it and redo it.
Is that a county pond or?
It says FDOT.
FDOT. Who, who maintains that ditch that runs north south there? Next, in between Oak Tree and DOT?
I think.
Cause that's the only reason why it even comes up to the road to 10th, is because that ditch that runs north south?
It's the Oak, Oak, I, I had it pulled up a minute ago.
HOA?
HOA, it's the Oak Tree Point HOA.
Owns that ditch? Okay, thank you very much. Yep, thank you.
Mayor, quickly, so I can keep proceeding. Tisha, can you screenshot what you just pulled up on the thing and, and email the TV? Thank you.
All right, council, uh, y'all have any other questions on this? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, Dan, how do we include that in a motion if we're going to include that in a motion? We have to make it.
You asked the city manager to restate it and then you say so moved.
You know how to do it.
We were eliminating the southern sidewalk and putting a public access easement or track over the northern five foot sidewalk just south of their residential lots.
So moved. We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Can I get a second, please? I'll go ahead and make a second. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Uh, we go ahead and read item number eight into the rec, uh, yes.
You already read it.
We already read it, we go ahead and get, take a motion on that.
Will you include the same condition in that? Cause that's really where it should be in the PUD.
Yes, sir.
Much to improve, including the condition in the previous item as well.
We have a motion from the Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Nay.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you very much, Bruce, appreciate y'all.
Have a good evening.
Yep. All right, Madam Clerk, please read the next item.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2025-16. In ordinance of the city council, city of St. Cloud, Osceola County, Florida, mending chapter 48 waterways of the code of ordinances was to establish article two, creating section 48 dash four definitions, creating section 48 dash five requirements operating personal water crafts, section 48 dash six regulations for watercraft rental businesses, section 48 dash seven permits for watercraft rental businesses, section 48 dash eight enforcement, providing for conflicts of liability codification, administrative corrections, scrivener's errors and publication effective date.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Scott Davidoff, Deputy City Manager. Purpose of this ordinance is to regulate the operation of personal water crafts and watercraft rental businesses in St. Cloud. To enhance the safety for both watercraft operators and the general public and to address the safety concerns around the boat ramps and our waterways. During the city council workshop on February 6th, 25th, the city council had acknowledged the importance of regulating the personal water craft and rental businesses to ensure public health and safety at the boat ramps and waterways that highlighted the need for these regulations. This is something that has been discussed by previous city, city council, uh, for a number of years. And our existing code prohibits businesses from operating at the lakefront except as part of a special event or through a program to permit commercial activities. The state requirements for personal watercraft operators require safety equipment. There are time restrictions, which includes no operation from 30 minutes after sunset to 30 minutes before sunrise. And then age requirements, which are you must be 14 years of age. And there is a certification required for any operators born after January 1 of 98. Other requirements for these watercraft businesses are that the businesses must register their water crafts annually and hold a valid permit. And that would be done through the Parks and Recreation Department. And the water crafts must be registered in the business's name and have a valid Florida registration. The rentals would only be allowed at the city-owned lakefront park boat ramp. And all business transactions and reservations would occur offsite. No advertising would be permitted onsite, so you couldn't have tents or banners or, or have signs out there. Safety procedures would be enhanced. The operators must provide safety instructions to all the patrons, anybody who would be utilizing these water crafts. The water crafts must be identified with the business name prominently displayed upon them. That way, anybody, uh, from the enforcement side as well as from the public would be able to notice if they were actually authorized to be out there. Fueling and environmental concerns obviously are something we're very concerned about. So any fueling would require non-spill, excuse me, spill proof nozzles. And no storage of any fuel tanks would be permitted along the shoreline. There would be violations for any of these businesses that do violate the ordinance. There would be an initial warning for non-compliance. Again, similar to code enforcement, it's a very gentle touch with everyone. We wanna make sure that it's customer service friendly, but they would be given an initial warning for non-compliance, reminded of what the process was. Uh, a second warning would result in them having to stop operations for that day. They would have to immediately cease business out there for that day. And a third violation would lead to forfeiture of their permit, which would mean they would no longer be able to operate on city property. Enforcement would be done by code enforcement, uh, would be done by the police department, be done by the park ranger. Parks and Recreation staff would be able to be out there as well. The permit requirements, uh, as city council had provided consensus for during the workshop, it's the annual renewal, uh, and the fees. It would be $5,000 annually for a business that would be located, that's already located in the St. Cloud and $7,000 for non-resident businesses. They must provide a valid liability insurance with the specific coverage requirements and the permit must be displayed on the vehicles and the trailers. Obviously, the insurance requirements you have there. So in summary, this ordinance aims to ensure safety for personal watercraft operators, rental businesses in St. Cloud. The key provisions, again, cover the safety equipment, operational guidelines, commercial operator regulations and enforcement. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2025-16 and requests council approval of the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Since the city is the applicant, Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for bringing this forward. Um, the, the intent of this overall ordinance is to ensure that the residents that live in St. Cloud have access to, to the boat ramp and, and to the facilities that their taxpayer dollars pay for. We all know you, you, you get down there on Saturday and it is a madhouse. And it's every single person from all over central Florida, um, coming to access our wonderful lakes. Most of our, our wonderful lake and, and use the lake front by ramp. A lot of the jurisdictions, as we know, um, throughout the region have adopted a permit structure and it kinda leaves us wide open, um, to kinda create chaos. Most on council know when this was first brought up, I was like, oh, no, 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 absolutely not. You know, I've lived in St. Cloud my whole life, I don't wanna spend $10 to put a permit, you know, to pay for a permit. But in this case, I think it will help, um, the residents out in the long run. So those are my comments and thank you.
All right, and we have some citizen, uh, comments on here. Scott Seaver? Did I pronounce that right, Scott? Sever or Seaver?
Yes, sir.
I should know already.
Yes, sir.
Uh, name and address for the, for the.
Scott Seaver, 2510 Zuni Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Are y'all proposing, uh, fee to use the ramp for the citizens?
That's not what this one, this is. Is that not being discussed tonight at all?
This is for watercraft rental businesses.
I believe the fee was included in the fee schedule that was on the consent agenda.
Okay. Yes, that was, uh, that was on the consent agenda. The, what, what letter was that one? Letter A. Yep, that was pulled on the consent agenda. You had written number, ordinance number nine, item nine on here, Scott, that's why. When you'd asked to speak about that.
And he certainly, yeah, probably can comment on it.
Oh, yeah, I'm definitely a comment. We did vote on it, on the consent, um, but I'd definitely let you comment.
So it was already passed?
It was, um, in, on the consent agenda at the very beginning of the meeting, yes, sir.
Okay, so there is going to be a fee now.
I'll let the, Scott, would you like to talk about that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. As council had directed, city staff, uh, brought back to council a proposal, uh, back in January, I believe it was, on, uh, the issues regarding the boat ramp. So what the program is that's being implemented, that will, uh, with council having approved that this evening, all the information will be going out to the general public, uh, beginning tomorrow morning. That's all ready to go. And it is not actually for utilizing the boat ramp itself, it's for parking trailers at the boat ramp. So it would only be for those individuals who are parking a trailer in those spaces. It would be $6 per day, uh, that would be for anybody who's going for the daily use. However, city residents are able to purchase an annual pass, which would be $35 for a year. Uh, and it's $150 for county residents, uh, they would be able to purchase that. However, city council had directed that until the end of the calendar year through December 31st, that city residents would be able to get that pass for no charge.
Okay, so it, it's not on the ramp itself, it's on the parking spot.
Parking a trailer, yes, sir.
Parking the trailers, yes, sir. Scott, that's your answer, it's not on the, the ramp? And I'm gonna let you speak, of course, I'm gonna give you all the, you know, your time to speak on this, if you wanted to talk about that.
Well, you already voted on it, correct?
It was voted on, yes, sir. And the only reason I didn't call you up for, for that is because you wrote item number nine in the ordinance here. That's why we're talking about orange number nine, the rental business, watercraft rental business. I think you wrote the wrong one on the.
I didn't write that on there.
Oh, really?
I didn't write nine. I just wrote ordinance.
Is it an A?
Did you?
Well, is that, that's fine, it's, it's irrelevant, you already. My, what is the purpose for charging people to park?
Well, I'll let Scott answer that, of course. Um, but he did send over, you know, we did spend a lot of money. I, uh, when we took in Chisholm Park, uh, how long ago was that? Four or five years?
Ten years.
Ten, it's been that long. That ramp, you know how bad that boat ramp is? I think we just spent, what, 580 something thousand dollars on that?
Yeah, Scott read the numbers earlier when we were talking on, on number A, I'm sure he can read them again.
Yes, sir, Mayor. As Councilmember Paul had, had asked, uh, earlier, the, um, cost for the marina repair, that will be coming before council will be somewhere, our initial quotes are somewhere between 785,000 to 1.1 million. The dredging that was done in the lakefront in 2019 was 247,000. And the current repairs that are going on at the boat ramp and enhancements at the Chisholm Park boat ramp is 455,477 dollars.
Okay, Scott, which ones did you have to concern? Chisholm or lakefront? What was your, your main concern?
My first concern, which is no fault of y'all's, you weren't here, but. And if you can't afford to take care of it, I should not pay extra taxes for it. My problem is the city keeps consuming land, but they don't wanna pay for it. They don't want, they, not you, you guys didn't personally do it, but it was consumed by the city. You didn't have to take.
You, you're talking about Chisholm Park, that's why I was asking which one are you?
Well, isn't the fee higher for a county resident versus a city resident?
It is, yes, sir.
And my concern is for decades I paid taxes that now they don't wanna pay for. Now I'm gonna have to pay more taxes to launch my boat, which I've been doing my whole life. And since the day the city took it over, and you guys personally don't take care of it, but city employees do, it's been in disarray.
Yeah.
There's black mold on the kids' playgrounds, there's trash everywhere, there's giant holes in the dirt. And again, the city's done nothing for years and now they wanna charge residents more money? What's been going on? And my concern is, because I live in a county, now I'm taxed at even a higher rate to use the boat ramp I've used my whole life. And every time I'm there, half the people there aren't even from this county. I, I understand that, but.
Yeah, and I think that's really the intent is there's a, many citizens from other counties coming in and, and using the ramps and. Not just that, you got the lakefront parking spots, I mean, we're addressing all of that as well. I'm gonna let City Manager first speak on this, we got another, a lot of lights.
Just, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Um, first of all, when, when we took over Chisholm, Osceola County is wanting us to take over all of the parks within the JPA. Within the agreement, they required us to take Chisholm next, in this next coming budget year, we're having to take Part and Triangle. And, um, and then after that, it's Old Hickory and we would prefer not to take these parks, but that is something that Osceola County is. And then after that, it's Old Hickory, and we would prefer not to take these parks, but that is something that Osceola County is, is wanting to do. They don't want to be in that recreation business. But further, when we took over Chisholm Park, it was not in good condition. The city went in and invested, had to replace the playground equipment itself. We've done other construction projects with the bathrooms. We also recently did a large master plan for the entire complex. We're doing stormwater improvements. We have been investing in Chisholm Park and I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Urban.
The city manager basically said what I was going to say. We, we didn't really have much of a choice in taking over Chisholm Park. And we have a joint planning agreement with Osceola County. And, and, and this is just part of that, I think, all, all the improvements that we have planned for Chisholm Park. I would like to maybe explore a discount rate for maybe Osceola County residents as a whole, just to look at that. Because.
Scott, do you want to sit down? There's three more people. So if you want to sit down, let's stand over. Okay, I'm just letting you know.
As he mentioned, there's a lot of county residents that come and a few of them are typically abusing.
Okay, Councilmember Gilbert.
Scott's a friend of mine. We, we go back some time and we did have conversations on this and I understood why. And I, I know during our conversation, you had mentioned that the city wanted this park. And it was 10 years ago, but I sit on this council taking all the good and bad with the council. But I, when I became a council, I started to look at what costs to keep the park running. And I think there's a few bucks going into it. I know you take care of buildings. I know you're a good citizen. I know you do great stuff. Scott, we just don't know how to maintain a quality lake without some fee structures attached. All the surrounding areas, Seminole County, Orange County, Duval, all those are charging for those areas. And the counties are actually trying to get rid of those parks to municipalities because of the overhead that those counties are. So I, I feel for you, brother, and I know we talked about it and I know, again, I understand you're, you know, you're a great citizen. You volunteer. I think you're in the JP and annex and you've been on many boards and commissions. I just, I don't know if there's a better solution than having that. Now, if this makes other counties not come, Orange, Seminole, so on and so forth. It may not be that, that care is going to need that much, but right now we're overcrowded. And I know you're talking about Chisholm, but at Lake, Lakeshore, Lakefront, it, that house there with all different counties just coming and going. Because our assistant city manager, deputy city manager, I apologize, worked at, was at Lake County, what county? In Clermont, and they had the same, they had to do something because of those ones, their lake. So I wish I had a good answer for you. I just want to tell you, I appreciate you and I appreciate all you do. I don't know a way around not charging some fees for that, but I do feel it's a member urban. If there's something, something for Osceola County, I just don't have that answer. But I just want to tell you, we talked about it. I did investigate. The county kind of had us take over Chisholm. We didn't ask for it. But go ahead.
I appreciate y'all's time and not to argue, but the city keeps doing this and then they complain about what it costs. Unfortunately, where I live, there's a bunch of millionaires that live around me. So by your very own logic, if they can't afford their house, I'll buy it and ask you guys how to pay for it. I mean, at some point, you guys have to stop the annexation so you can control what's going on financially. That's all I'm asking, because now it's a burden on me because I don't live in a city. Something I've used my entire life. And I know it's done and over with, but.
And I don't know that county would have had the money to put it in there. I think their focus has shifted from parks to, you know, I don't know how many parks they still control.
But in the future, I'd appreciate if the city could slow down on any of some things that they can't afford to pay for it.
Councilmember Paul.
So back to what city manager Veronica stated about the parks. We did have a workshop about discussing these parks. And prime example, Narcoosi Community Center is one that was brought up where the county is wanting the city to take over it. But I think we brought up is before we take another part, they need to fix it up before they want to dish it off to the city and stuff like that. Because if you go out there, it's not being maintained properly and stuff like that. So that's my comment on that.
Scott, we can have more conversation about this because there are many fees within that, that ordinance or the, on the consent agenda, right? Resolution?
Yes, sir.
It wasn't just the trailer park and the boat park.
Yes, sir.
We'll talk about that. And I think that's what Mr. Urban and Gilbert alluded to, you know, what about county residents? And then we can have that discussion again in the workshop.
And, and I could, for that real, real quick. Counsel, that was something that you had brought up initially during the workshop. Because initially it was presented that there was only the annual pass that was available for city residents only. That there was no pass available for county residents. And council had directed that there should be a pass for county residents, which was the $150, which was the fee that council had recommended at that time. So other counties do not have the ability to purchase any sort of annual pass. Only Osceola County residents have the ability to purchase the annual pass. That was something that council had requested to be put in there. And also to Councilwoman Paul, to, to your point, with Parton Triangle Park that, that you mentioned is one of the ones that the city will be having to take over. Prior to us and as we're negotiating that with them, we provided them with a list and it was 300 something thousand dollars worth of repairs that had to be done before the city would take over that farm, which was something that had not been done previously for Chisholm Park or any of these other parks that the city has taken over.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
And I just wanted to add to that about Parton Triangle, because I believe according to the contract, we were supposed to take it over quite some time ago. But staff has done a really good job of saying, no, 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 don't top that over here, you know. They're looking, they're looking out for it the best that we can.
Yeah, and Scott, we don't always get it right on the first crack, but I think we're gonna have that discussion again and talk about county residents. Definitely stay tuned. You're, you're up in those workshops as well. Thank you, Scott. Have a good evening. All right, let's go ahead and take a 10 minute break real quick and we'll come back.
I'm sorry, Mayor, for good, did we vote? No, we didn't. I'm sorry.
Oh, do we have to?
Please.
What were we talking about?
The watercraft.
Do we have a motion? Motion, number, second one, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, Madam Flut, please call the room.
Councilmember Paul. Councilmember Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion here is 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Number today that would be events over thirty four hundred and limited that to one event per month unless city council approves otherwise and has the ability to do so at a minimum time. And to repair the utilization of approved road park closure events with road and park closures also for the entertainment district, which would be limited to two per month for non-city run events on a first serve basis. And again, event applicants were able to submit up to one year in advance. The amendments also include solid waste provisions as determined by the city, ensuring that city staff sets up and requires solid waste disposal plans for these events. Requiring the location of all activities, tents, vendors, and stages to be on the event layout plans, establishing a cancellation authority, and to establish an event decision appeal process. And then again, this, as council had requested, establishes the city and all departments are exempt from the special event permitting process. The formal process, however, the city still goes through the same review process. Staff's recommendation is the approval of ordinance twenty five, twenty twenty five dash seventeen, requesting approval by city council. Here to address questions that you may have.
First, we got Councilmember Gilbert. Just one thing, that we're doing events around the country, around the nation. We're always having to pay, we have to pay for fire marshal, fire marshal approval plans, look and things like that. I don't think this is out of line, any events that take place, there has to be approval message, but how many hands, how many people approve it before it gets approved?
Well, it goes through every department.
Okay, let me rephrase it. How many departments have to approve this?
Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Recreation, Public Works.
So you have four departments. On average, how long does it take them to review this?
Um, depends on the level of complexity of the event. Some of these events could be reviewed in a matter of minutes. If it's a small event, some of these events require a number of weeks that can go back and forth. If it's a very large event, that has a lot of moving parts that require revisions, especially when it comes to public safety.
Are these events priced out accordingly to their specialties? As you said, if it takes four hours to do, would it be a higher price for, let's say, police safety, fire safety than it would for a normal event? That is, I don't want to call it rubber stamping, but stamping.
Yes, all, all of the associated fees are part of the fee schedule.
I just see it in the private sector that every hand it touches.
Yes, sir.
The money that goes into that gets.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul.
All right, and can you publicly, for the record, indicate why we're amending this ordinance?
Sure. Um, this has been something that the city has been looking at for, for some time in order to address and fix some loopholes, as well as to clarify for both the applicants and for city staff. This also addresses when there have been some major issues that have occurred during some of the special events. There was a large special event that occurred. I guess it was the late summer, early fall down at the lakefront that the applicant was dishonest on their application. However, there were some loopholes in there that if the current regulations that we're proposing this evening, if they were in place, we would have caught, staff would have caught that and prevented those issues from occurring.
Thank you.
But this is the one spoke about, about allowing only two events per month that goes off streets.
In the entertainment district, yes, sir.
Okay. And I think my, my comment on that, the Wednesday night monthly market is already one of them. It takes up the, every month for the entire year.
Yes, sir.
And then you've got the Relay for Life, which is in November, I believe, October, November, in that area. So essentially, those months are just blocked out.
The entertainment district, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I would like to just amend that to allow two on the weekends, you know, and not just two altogether, you know. So allow three total, but.
Three total per month, yeah, absolutely.
Kind of, I don't want to limit us because essentially the Wednesday night, that's an ongoing thing. We know that's going to happen. Uh, but what if somebody comes up and says, we've got an idea for a huge event, but then you got Relay for Life already has their schedule and Wednesday nights taken there. And then we got three open weekends on a Saturday or Sunday, whatever day they don't do the other day. And we can't do anything. Not that I want to shut down the street downtown all the time, but what if one says, we got twenty thousand people coming in and you can really do a number for your community?
Yes, sir, we can absolutely make that change.
Do you have any comments on that? Does that sound good?
I think, I think it was left up.
It, it, it is, the way that it's written right now is it says two, however, the applicant can request through city council. Sometimes that can take a little bit extra time, so if somebody's coming in, setting it at three may make it a little bit easier on the applicant. But I mean, we can work with it whichever way council requests.
Anything over that, they can come back to council.
Yeah, I think that's. And that previously has not been a problem. That was why staff had suggested that, so making it three certainly is, is, we don't foresee that becoming an issue at all.
Right, and, and all of these events have to go through the permitting.
Yes, sir.
Their office, so.
That's correct.
They can't, hook comes out in the, in the streets and, like I used to do with the car show for the city. Thank you. All right, can we get a motion? I, I'd like to add that condition for the third one is that, since I'm doing, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve. I'm sorry, do we have any from, anyone from the audience like? All right, then I go ahead and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve that condition. I'm sorry, allowing three instead of two seconds per month. We have a motion from Mayor Spagan, Councilmember Gilbert, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Hi.
Sheriffmember Paul.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor, if we could, just a little clarification. So your, your amendment to what was proposed was for, only for the entertainment district?
Not a week from.
You're in the, you're in the lakefront.
Yeah, it's the entertainment district is really the. Is that?
Yep.
Item number nine, did you read it already? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, not nine, sorry, the next item is what I meant. I'm so sure.
Final public hearing for ordinance summer twenty twenty five dash twenty one. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus thirteen point thirty two acres identified as puffin road commercial located east of T A West Drive, north of Branch Oak Road, south of East Earl Robinson Memorial Highway, west of Ver Oak Boulevard. In accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty two. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation and commercial to approximately plus minus thirteen point thirty two acres identified as puffin road commercial. Located east of T A West Drive, north of Branch Oak Road, south of East Earl Robinson Memorial Highway, and west of Ver Oak Boulevard, providing for a later official future land, land use map of the comprehensive plan following the planning commission's recommendations for publication, availability, effects, severability, copies and file, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty three. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus thirteen point thirty two acres identified as puffin road commercial. From A C Agricultural Development and Conservation County to H B Highway Business Zoning Designation within commercial future land use designation generally located east of T A West Drive, north of Branch Oak Road, south of East Earl Robinson Memorial Highway, west of Ver Oak Boulevard, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map following the planning commission's recommendations for publication, so there's a lead and effective date. Good evening, Melissa Duncan. The cases before you tonight are for the annexation comprehensive plan amendment and Johnny Puff Amendment for the project known as Puff Road Commercial. This request meets the, this request meets both the statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing future land use is commercial within agricultural zoning designation. The requested city land use is commercial and the requested zoning designation is highway business. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the land depicting the current county commercial land use context. And you'll see that on the zoning map, it shows the designated zoning district as agricultural. On or for July, sorry, on or for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, staff recommended approval. After this item went to planning commission and came to city council on April tenth, the item was continued to, which is this meeting in order to, in order to allow applicant to work with their client to add the following condition, and I will read the condition into the record. It is self-storage facilities shall be expressly prohibited on the subject site, not with spending any otherwise permitted uses within the highway business zoning. Planning commission recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that also through ordinance number twenty one five twenty one for the annexation, twenty twenty five dash twenty two for the comprehensive plan amendment, and twenty twenty five dash twenty three for zoning map amendment with staff's recommended condition of approval. And the applicant is present and we are available for questions.
All right, thank you. And would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, John Adams, R J W A, Dave Broadway, City of Florida, three four seven four one. The agent for the applicant, in agreement with staff support for requesting annexation, land use of commercial and zoning request highway business. Uh, we did volunteer, the condition committed to know self-storage on this property. And we appreciate consideration and be happy to address any question you all may have.
Thanks, sir. And Councilmember Gilbert.
Mr. Adams, just want to thank you for working with the city and working with the council for, for those stipulations and we should the partnership in what you're going to bring forward to this commercial development. Uh, as you know, we know the city needs it, so I just want to thank you a lot of times when it ends, but you're really, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
For taking care of it for me. I give to you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, John. Uh, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item?
All right, and with that, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert, Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
And can I get a motion for item number twelve?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Hi.
Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
And can I get a motion for item number thirteen? Second, motion approved, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, item fourteen has moved to the June, item fifteen, sixteen moves to June. Madam Clerk, please read item number seventeen into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance summer twenty twenty five dash thirty eight. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus two acres identified as Primo School St. Cloud located east of South Arcosi Road and north of Ralph Miller Road, south of Ditzin Road and Drive, and west of Hacking Road. With the voluntary annexation, annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty five dash thirty nine. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation commercial approximately plus minus two acres identified as Primo School St. Cloud located east of South Arcosi Road, north of Ralph Miller Road, and south of Ditzin Drive, west of Hacking Road, providing for amending of official future land use map of the comprehensive plan following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effects, severability, copies and file, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment, zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus two acres identified as Primo School St. Cloud from U S dash M urban settlement manufactured product county to H B Highway Business Zoning Designation with commercial future land use designation. Generally located east of South Arcosi Road, Ralph Miller Road, south of Ditzin Drive, and west of Hacking Road, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map following the planning recommendations, planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, severability, and effective date. Good evening, Melissa Duncan, Director of Community Development. These cases before you tonight are for the annexation comprehensive plan amendment and zoning map amendment for the project known as Primrose Schools St. Cloud. This request meets statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County as it is contiguous to city limits and reasonably compact. The existing county future land use is low density residential. The existing county zoning designation is U S dash M, which stands for urban settlement manufactured product. The requested city land use is commercial and the requested city zoning is highway business. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic representation of the subject parcel highlighted there. You'll see that it is contiguous to city limits, which is the area shaded in yellow. And here's a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the county's future land use of low density residential. You'll notice that it is directly adjacent to commercial land use. And here's the graphic representation of the zoning map depicting the U S dash M zoning district. On or before March thirty first, twenty twenty five, staff recommended approval. Planning commission also recommended approval. Likewise, it is requested that council approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash three eight for the annexation, twenty twenty five dash thirty nine for the comprehensive plan amendment, and twenty twenty five dash four zero for the zoning map amendment for the project known as Primrose Schools at St. Cloud. And at this time, staff is available for questions. I'm not sure if the applicant is here.
Yes, would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mike Alves, Field Engineering, four hundred and fifty drive, suite nineteen fifty ten, Florida. Our team is in agreement with the findings and staff support. We kindly ask that you go forward with the approval or the recommendations of all staff and the planning commission will hear for questions.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? All right, with that, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Hi.
Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
And can I get a motion for item number eighteen?
Motion.
Second, motion approved, Councilmember Gilbert, second from Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Hi.
Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, and can I get a motion for item number nineteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Councilmember Urban.
Hi.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Hi.
Mayor Robertson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for sticking around. Madam Clerk, please read item number twenty twenty one into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty one. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, signing a land use designation medium density residential to approximately plus minus one point sixty four acres identified as palm properties located east of Arcosi Road, north of East Earl Robinson Memorial Highway, south of Lillian Lee Road, west of Puffin Road, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan following the planning recom, planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty two. An ordinance solicited council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation approximately plus minus one point sixty four acres identified as palm properties from A C Agro Co. to R two single family dwelling. Zoning designation with a medium density residential feature land use map designation, land use designation generally located of east Arcosi Road, north of East Earl Robinson Memorial Highway, south of Lillian Lee Road, west of Puffin Road, providing for entry designation of the official zoning map following the planning commission's recommendation, proof of publication, severability, and effective date. Good evening, Melissa Duncan, Director of Community Development. These cases before you tonight are for the comprehensive plan amendment and the zoning map amendment for the project known as Palm Properties. The existing county future land use is low density residential and the existing county zoning is agricultural. The requested city land use is medium density residential and the requested zoning for the city is R two, single family dwelling. This request is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. There's a graphic representation of the future land use map depicting the current county's low density residential land use.
low density residential land use for context. And here's a map showing the county's current zoning district of agricultural. Honor before March third, twenty twenty five, staff recommended approval. Planning commission also recommended approval. We are requesting tonight that city council also approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash four one for the comprehensive plan amendment and ordinance number twenty twenty five dash four two for the zoning map amendment. And at this time, staff is available for questions, and I believe the applicant is present.
All right, thank you. And would the applicant like to speak on this item? And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And can I get a motion on item number twenty?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Deputy Mayor Fletcher, second. Second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And can we get a motion for item number twenty one? Motion approved, Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Sorry, you got it. Second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
How do you know?
I'm just trying to move us along. Ready to go.
So are we, thank you, Chief.
Some people have flights to catch, and other people have training tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, as a reminder.
I'm gonna ask for your name and record in a second. Madam Clerk, please read item number twenty two.
Public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty five dash fifteen. An emergency ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, imposing a ban on open burning within the corporate limits of the city of St. Cloud, providing for severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Before you, ordinance number twenty twenty five dash fifty, request approval. This ordinance, this will ban all outside burning unless it goes through a chimney system. Two-fold, this will take care of the land clearing problems that we've had in the past, the other being that we have a little drought going on, even though it's raining, still not enough. So obviously recommends approval for this ordinance. You'll have a future ordinance come back before you that's a little, has a little more parameters, but right now we're continuing problems we have. Good question. So the fire marshal or you would take the hand off when needed? At this point, this puts all the power under city council in the future. We're gonna have a better ordinance for you that will have parameters in there where it could automatically come off.
Chief is out of state when we, you know, there is a provision that allows the chief, based on the drought conditions, to remove this emergency ban.
The chief, not part of it to be the chief to do that.
Chief, and he works with the fire marshal.
We're putting the ban on now because the county's, there's what we're gonna do ours.
You know, this is an immediate ban addressed the urgent condition that's going on with the drought. The premise is to by, at your July, by your, at your July meeting, we will have an ordinance for final adoption. You'll see it on first reading and introduction in June, and in July, which will provide greater detailed parameters for permitting and for the fire chief, based on the drought conditions, to stop all permitting if necessary and to re-institute it as needed based on the drought conditions.
Okay. Councilmember Urban.
I'm fine with this, obviously. I would like in the future for these emergency ordinances to have some sort of automatic expiration date. I'm always skeptical of giving government unlimited authority.
I know, that's why.
That's why, that's why I'm skeptical, Mayor.
Under this one, as the city attorney said, the authority falls back under me. And I tell you typically what the measuring bar is for these ordinances as far as the county is once there's one week solid underneath the drought index number of five hundred on the K P P I, that ordinance is listed basically. Then once it's five hundred again, which frequently happens, they put it back in fact. It's kind of a yo-yo through the summer months until we get some more rain.
So awesome, yeah. And by the way, I drove by where apparently lightning struck at three off of Michigan Avenue there, and we drove by right after it was on fire, but your guys were amazing putting it out, and it was.
You don't remember when Stephen Smith was on fire, did you?
I do. I was the incident commander in that fire. It was not fun.
That was lightning.
I guess. And I'm no.
Not, not buried here, electric.
That was like eight years ago. It was very windy that day, and the fire got really fast. So, yeah, we had a lot of mutual aid, and we handled that one, just like we'll handle all the future ones that come my way.
So you've already set a threshold of when it, yes, sir, conditions get better than, okay, you'll know better. Think you got it covered. And can I get a motion on item number twenty two?
Motion.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Gilbert, second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Chief. You're dismissed. Oh, is it?
Yes.
Go to the fire station.
Hopefully.
Oh, yeah, we've already done them all. Okay. Madam Clerk, please read resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven three R.
Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero seventy three R. A resolution of the city of city council of city of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a task authorization to the contract and the agreement for construction manager at risk for fire station rebid with Arco Construction, Inc., dated March fifth, twenty twenty five, for fire station thirty two and any amendments thereto, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Jason Miller, Fire Chief again. Twenty twenty five dash zero seven three R is for the construction manager at risk services to construct the seventeen thousand square foot fire station thirty two. The former fire station thirty two facility has been inactive for a few months. We've had them in a temporary facility. As maybe you know, the new fire station thirty two will have four apparatus bays. We'll be able to staff up to thirteen personnel at that station, planning for the future growth. The former logistics building at the site will become the physical fitness facility for the firefighters. They'll also offer some services to the other city employees out of that building. Our request is to enter into a task authorization for construction manager at risk services for fire station thirty two with Arco. We have Arco representatives here, and our recommendation is for approval. Resolution twenty twenty five seventy three R will approve the task authorization with Arco for the construction of this. The resolution number twenty twenty five, R, approved on February thirteenth, twenty five twenty five. The budget is twelve million four hundred ninety four thousand four hundred fifty three dollars and eighty seven cents. Coming out of capital projects, project twenty one oh four. Sure if the other side made it in there. Staff recommends approval, and we request council to.
Thank you, Chief. And can, are there any comments from the audience? All right, and can I get a motion on this item? Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Deputy Mayor Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I thank you very much, and I'm sure our firefighters do also. Thank you.
I think Chief Kirk, he thinks you're our favorite child.
He had consent agenda.
All right, give me one second here. And so next up, we have, Madam Clerk, please read item number three.
Discussion on possible action regarding appointments to boards and committees for vacancies for the Historic Preservation Board and Planning Commission.
City clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only, actually, tonight you should have received an email that Megan Marshall has requested to rescind her resignation for the planning commission. And so the only appointments that we would have tonight would be for the two alternates for Historic Preservation Board. Make your nominations, and then one motion at the end.
Was Elizabeth Lamog, was she on this board already? Previously?
I don't remember who it was, yes.
Yeah, I believe I got a, I had received communication from her as to why, wanting to be on there, this is previous for, we have vacancies, so I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Lamog for an alternate, alternate one. We're gonna vote on both at the same time?
Yeah, if you can get another nomination.
Yeah, we need to fill alternate number two. So if anyone.
Anyone has a.
I would like to nominate Carmen Hernandez.
Motion to approve the nominee.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Second to approve the nominations. We have a second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. The next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on the item tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at the final hearing, at which the council will consider final action. There are no first readings and introductions at this time. And now we have comments from the city attorney.
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And anything from the city manager?
I'm sorry, I have a list, quickly. First, Senator Arrington has requested to hold remote office hours, providing assistance and information to residents at the community center. Four events for two to three hours. We've seen that.
I believe you said it was just for a few months, right?
Four events was on the email. Four events were what was listed on the email, so we could just say for the four events. They were one per month.
So there's gonna be an event that gets open to the public? Okay, who advertised, she'll advertise?
She would.
I think that's a good thing for.
Yeah, it's not.
I think I had two, I don't.
Is that open hours? We're paying the staff.
We're, we have the facility open with staff in the building at that time.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, it's open. Yeah, okay.
Um, thank you. Just wanted to point out, there's not anybody left here, maybe they're still watching. If you notice, this time we put the business plan update on the agenda under reports, just trying to bring some greater awareness of all the accomplishments that we've been making and the status on our projects to the citizens. So I just wanted to point out, it's in the business plan update. This was the first time we did it, which I think was a great idea. We also have added that new update to the website under the strategic plan tab, if anybody wants to see where we're at with that. The speed zone cameras are operational now.
The schools.
These schools zones, yes, thank you, thank you, sorry.
The speed zone.
They are speed, but they're only for the school zones.
I'm tired. Congratulations to our communications department who won first place for the city's podcast at the Florida Municipal Communicators Association. They're from outstanding category, so we're very proud of them. Tomorrow, nine AM, don't skip it because you're tired. We will have a training at the fire training building. It is the ICS for elected officials, and we do have a special guest joining us. So Kevin Guthrie, the Emergency Management Director for the State of Florida, is going to be joining us remotely for some of that tomorrow. Tomorrow, the city will be receiving an award, the engineering award, at the Central Florida Safety Summit for our success on the Crosswalk Project at Buttinger and Peghorn. I'm not sure if any of you were on the board at the time. We had a resident come up multiple times and ask for us to do some improvements at that intersection. And so our engineering department determined that a rapid flashing beacon sign was the best solution, and then we had to deal with delays. So she came.
Where did you say the intersection, or Peghorn?
Peghorn and Buttinger.
Okay. There's a flash you like that.
Flashing beacon sign. And so she came multiple times asking for updates, you know, so I think it's amazing because really this was a citizen that had access for it. We met, you know, the council gave us direction, continued pushing. I'm not sure if any of you were on the board at the time, but we're winning an award for that tomorrow. And then, since we put in that, those flashing beacon signs with the support of the police department, who did the best, best foot forward program out there, we, so between the two, we had increased the yield rates from thirty one percent to eighty one percent. So it's just substantial, so. Great job to people involved, and that's.
Very nice. All right, and there were council comments, so I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Paul.
So for the month of May, if you don't know, this month is acknowledged by teachers, nurses, and law enforcement, so I want to say publicly thank you to everyone that is in that career field for all you do for the St. Cloud community. So thank you.
Councilmember Urban.
Just one thing. I had expressed to staff my frustration with how we're getting such low quality, I think, businesses within the highway business zoning district. I've been told I can't name them specifically, but we all know what we're talking about here. The businesses that don't create jobs, they are overly abundant in our city. It's very annoying to see applications of them coming in over and over again, taking over our valuable highway business and commercial space. I would like to see if the council would be interested in directing staff to look at our highway business, possibly removing some of those repeat offenders for lack of their.
I mean, yeah, I'm definitely open. Is that, is that something we can do? And that's.
We're gonna have to look at more specifically.
Maybe do it as an all condition, all conditional?
Yeah, we'd have to look at it and then see what they show. Typically, there are ways to implement overlay districts, however, you have to specifically identify in separate categories. Like you can't have an overlay district against if we say no specific kind of retail, right?
I know the uses that he's asking for. Within the table of permissible uses, they're already specifically called out individually as being permitted. So I think what he's asking for is that we would remove it as permitted or make it a conditional use.
Yeah, I think we have, because what if the other ones, because I agree, there's an abundance of them, but let's fast forward. What if those others go out of business? None open?
Well, if you, if that's.
But if we make it a conditional use, say.
Yes, it's like, make it as a conditional use, then it's not prohibited, it's allowed on this specific conditions, and each time you have to come back in front of the city council.
What would the conditions that we would have to do to not, so if it's conditional use, we can, we don't have to give it, and there's not anything that in lulled, it says we have to give it until they fit, so right here, right?
That's correct. But the conditions are.
Because we think there's twelve.
We're sort of talking generically, the conditions for any conditional use are specific related to the use, so you really can't speculate as to what the art we know with the use. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So we have to follow the use, and then we see what conditions we. The overall, the overall concept behind a conditional use is it's instant, not otherwise it's instant, not otherwise permitted, but with the right condition may be allowed in a particular area. There's a lot of flexibility for reviewing agency of the council to look at it and say, we just can't get the right conditions to allow this in this area.
But yes, I'm with you.
I have consensus.
Thank you. And we have Deputy Mayor Fletcher. And Councilmember Gilbert.
Uh, just one thing I'd like to note, today at the meeting and we had public comment, I thought a few of those public commenters went, went way beyond their time limit of speaking and we interacted with them, but you see when people get upset, I can mention names, but if we allow them to go further, they just get, they're, they get revved up. All of a sudden, we're, we're trying to accommodate it, but we're really not, we're putting some gasoline in there, so I don't know how we do it, Police Chief, or how we, you know, make the decorum here professionally. Because I, I've seen other council meetings and they've gone awry. I just don't want these to go awry, so I, I don't know how we address that, Mayor, uh, council.
Well, the one in particular.
There's two that really went over. I just personally, you know, that, and, and I just see it escalating, we don't stop it. It's just my opinion and I, the leisure of the council, if you guys are okay with it, but, you know, I, I don't know, it just, it just, we, we're so accommodating, I don't know if we really need to allow that, I don't know.
I can say the, the first one. To mayor salute. He had three separate issues he had to get off his chest, that's the only reason why I gave him more time on. I didn't anticipate the end result, obviously, that was a surprise. And the other one, I think that was just, uh, we gotta let cooler heads prevail with that. There, that whole community's frustrated right now. I'd say, there's, there's a few of them that are frustrated. And I think we can work through that situation, but yeah, this is not the place to, I mean, everybody's ready to yell at us, at least me, I don't care, but maybe we should. Right. Seventeen, when they give me the double bird, I'm following up. No, I'm not kidding, I'm sorry. I was just, that was a joke, it's eleven o'clock. It was just a joke. I apologize. No, I do agree, yeah, it's, it's not comfortable when, when people do that. And maybe we, when, I'll do a better job of toning it down, trying to talk them down a little. I, I just think we're so accommodating. You, you, of course, are the same, I just. Great meeting and let's have them next month.
What a great idea.
All right. Is that it? I have no comments. Thank you, staff, thank you for staying late, Kelly, appreciate you doing this. Scott, everybody here, Jim. You could have brought us coffee, you know. No, but thank you. Our next information section, report section. Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, one thirty PM at City Hall. Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five, City Council Workshop, nine AM at City Hall.
Oh, I think the CRA meeting's at, I thought it was at one thirty.
That's what it says.
But it says three thirty.
Mine says one thirty here. Oh, and there, okay. And the next one's Monday, twenty, May twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, city offices will be closed in observance of the Memorial Day holiday, which I know will be over at the more at. Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, special city council meeting, six thirty PM at City Hall. Today, June fifth, twenty twenty five, Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, three thirty PM at City Hall. Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty five, city council meeting, six thirty PM at City Hall. It says six thirty on my list.
It was a typo again, I was, I was laughing, yeah, I was on, I was laughing about it, sorry. Six thirty four oh.
All right, and we have the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, citywide business plan. Two, and the warrant list number seven, and with that, we are adjourned.